And I just, first of all, wanted to welcome everybody to our September 21st meeting. It's either today or tomorrow, the first day of fall, for what it's worth. It'll be summer in Florida for quite a while still, but in any event, we're going to have a fairly busy meeting. And for those who may be tuning in or coming later, of course, we have our budget hearings at 6 o'clock. So just so everybody's on board with that. We're going to start with invocation today from Pastor Dr. Pablo Diaz. He's my pastor at my church. And two years ago, we went out and hired an interim pastor, and the pandemic hit. So he's been a pandemic pastor, and then last year came out and was able to participate as a regular pastor in the real world. And I'm so proud to have you here this afternoon, Pastor, and thank you for being here and doing our invocation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all for giving me this opportunity to call on the name of our Lord as we gather for this meeting. O eternal God, this is a day you've made. Teach us and help us to rejoice and be glad in it. May your joy outweigh the pressures and the stress and the demands of our calling to care for the well-being of others and our communities. Thank you for giving us this amazing opportunity to serve you by serving and leading others. Help us to be mindful of the needs and the dreams and the hopes of all people in our county and beyond, from the youngest to the elders. Give us courage to do what's right and to be people of justice and kindness and mercy and grace to those with means and those without. We pray for the county commissioners and all who serve our local communities. Grant them wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens they carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love. Keep their hearts pure and their eyes toward your face as they work in the best interest of people they are called to serve. Lord, these are not easy times to lead. They're challenging, demanding, pressing, but we turn to you, the God of all wisdom and of power and of grace. Guide these leaders in their thinking and all of us, and the decisions they'll make today and the actions they'll take today, tomorrow, and the days and weeks to come. When they are tired, grant them strength. When they're not clear, show them the way. May your word, may your love, may your presence be a light unto their path. Spirit of the living God, be upon all of us and show us and teaches how to best to listen, to lead, and to love. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much. Appreciate those words. Okay, we have a couple, one proclamation and a presentation, and I will come up there. All right, the first proclamation is for National Fire Prevention Week. I'd like to ask Craig Hare, Director of EMS and Fire Administration, and Chief Rick Graham, President of the Pinellas County Fire Chiefs Association, to join me up here at the podium. And they'll be accepting the National Fire Prevention Week proclamation for our citizens. I'm going to read the proclamation and take a picture and then let you all have a few words. Pinellas County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state. Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Pinellas County residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sound of the alarms and knows how to respond. Pinellas County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Pinellas County residents will make sure their smoke and CO, carbon dioxide, alarms meet the needs of all of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. I think that was carbon monoxide, wasn't it?
Carbon dioxide.
Yeah, thank you, not carbon dioxide. Good. I was never very good in chemistry, anyway. Pinellas County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And Pinellas County residents are responsive to public education measures that who are responsive are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. The 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety." Effectively serve to remind us, it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that October 3rd through October 9th, 2021 be recognized as Fire Prevention Week in Pinellas County.
Just want to say thank you, everyone. Thank you all the commissioners for the support you've given us over the years. And Barry, thank you very much. I know in these COVID times, it's been tough, but thank you, guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of our fire chiefs. They've gone above and beyond in supporting us over this pandemic. And so if you look at the number of missions that we've put them on, we're talking about fire protection services and rescue services, you'll see from these awards that they continue to go above and beyond there. Over this last year and a half, we sent them to support our nursing homes, and we sent them out to do mass vaccinations to support Department of Health. Now they're helping us support the hospitals and hospitals being full with peak transport to assist Sunstar. And so just, you know, I wanted to take a minute to appreciate all of our fire chiefs. The collaborations have never been better, and to recognize all of our firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs. Thanks very much.
Now, we have a really, really fun time as we get to recognize our 2021 Pinellas County Fire Professional of the Year awards. And I'm just going to go through and through this. There's a video that we'll see, and then we've got three different presentations. Today, we honor the recipients of the 2021 Pinellas County Fire Professionals of the Year awards. The awards are given to those who go above and beyond the call of duty when providing professional fire services to the community and to the members of the fire service. And first, before we get into that, we're going to go ahead and play a video here that gives you a brief description of the type of work that is performed by all of them and why they were chosen to be this year's winners. Please go ahead with the video. Thank you.
All of Pinellas County's fire professionals dedicate their careers to public safety and saving lives. Each year, the Board of County Commissioners recognizes this work by naming the Pinellas County Fire Professionals of the Year. This group's efforts stood out in 2021 because of their outstanding work on the job. Their selflessness and determination to save a life earned firefighter, paramedics Derek Tordowski and Riley Brennan the title of Fire Professionals of the Year. Tordowski, a 26-year veteran, felt called to the field after seeing the lifesaving actions taken by first responders to save his mother.
My mother was diabetic, and she had an insulin reaction, and they came out and gave her the sugar, the D-50, and that woke her up. And from there, they let me ride into the hospital with her, and I fell in love with the job, and I just always wanted to help.
While Brennan has only been in the field for a year and a half, his motivation to help people has made him an asset in the community.
I've grown up around it my whole life. I'm a third generation, and I've always fell in love with serving my community and helping out people.
Recently, the two made a lifesaving decision when they entered a burning home to rescue a man.
We have a saying, we risk a lot to save a lot, and the benefit of life outweighed the risk safety for us. It was a decision made that we felt like we could make a difference with that grab, and we felt it was the right decision at the time. We weren't jeopardizing ourselves for the benefit of the life.
Tristan Ward's ability to consistently handle difficult emergency calls makes him 2021's Emergency Fire Dispatcher of the Year. His knowledge of standard operating procedure and drive to help others, including his coworkers, makes him an asset in the regional 911 center.
It's just really nice helping people. You know, it's really fulfilling knowing that somebody's calling on their worst day, and you're able to help them out as best as you can, send professionals out to them that can help them.
911, what is the address of the emergency?
With less than a year of experience, Ward has already proven himself to be a strong dispatcher with the ability to ease caller's stress during difficult times.
What city is that in?
You just lose all control of everything once they lose control. So it's good to keep them level-headed because we need the information for the responders to go out and help them out a little more.
Working professionally, heroically, and without hesitation in the most intense moments, earned St. Petersburg Fire Rescue's Task Force 3 Urban Search and Rescue Team the title Special Operations Team of the Year. In addition to daily fire duties, this team responds to natural or catastrophic events in the state of Florida.
This takes a lot of training to do what these men and women behind me do. There's about 400 hours' worth of initial training, and then the ongoing continuing education that they do on a monthly basis is just as hard and tough as the first 400 hours.
In June, 20 members of their team answered the call to assist the city of Surfside in a rescue and later recovery of residents of a 12-story building collapse. Working under extreme conditions, they helped bring closure to the Surfside community.
For the victims that we were able to pull out, absolutely, that closure we brought to their families, you know, meant everything to the people staying behind me.
St. Petersburg Fire Rescue functions as a family, and Task Force 3 consistently exemplifies the importance of teamwork.
Not only being a team, you know, we're a family. And when you know what the person next to you, to the left or right, is thinking and doing, then that helps the team work more efficiently when we are tasked with the events that we respond to.
The Board of County Commissioners congratulates these Fire Professionals of the Year. And on behalf of the county, thank you to all our fire professionals for your service.
Hearing those stories, it never gets old. The things that they do normally every day just are amazing. First, I'd like to call up Tristan Ward, Public Safety Telecommunicator 1 from Pinellas County, Regional 911 Center. Yeah, I've kind of missed one key part here. Pinellas Federal Credit Union, Ms. Monica Lukasik, she's the marketing specialist, and she's going to come forward and help with the presentation of the awards. Tristan, as you saw there a little bit ago, joined 911 less than a year ago, but has already made a big impact. He demonstrates an exemplary level of technical skill in processing calls and provides excellent customer service to callers who are upset and sometimes hysterical by providing reassurance and empathy. Tristan is being recognized for a 911 call for a jet ski that exploded. After handling the dispatch of the fire, he immediately transitioned to medical instructions for a burn patient. He went above and beyond in handling this complex call and is a true asset to the 911 center. We appreciate all of your hard work and dedicated service to the citizens of Pinellas County. Thank you for everything that you do. Tristan, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And we'll step over here. No, you're good? You sure?
Yes, I'm positive.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Here, hold on. Hey, Kim, try again here. Tristan, come here. It would've been nice to have this for you and the picture. That was my doing, so you hold this. Try again.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Sorry about that, Monica. All right. All right. Next, I want to call up firefighter and paramedic Derek Tordowski and firefighter and EMT Riley Brennan from the Pinellas Park Fire Rescue. Derek is a 23-year veteran, and Riley is a third-generation firefighter with one year on the job. Derek and Riley were partners on Rescue 34 when they were dispatched to a firehouse. They arrived at the first unit and were told that there was an elderly male still inside the house. They made entry and rescued the man from the fully involved house fire. After affecting the rescue, they immediately changed to their medical role, where Derek declared a trauma alert for the burn victim. He began advanced treatment with a cyanide antidote kit and accompanied the patient with Sunstar to the burn center at Tampa General Hospital. Riley began treatment on the burn victim's wife for smoke inhalation while other fire rescue units arrived. while other fire rescue units were arriving on the scene. Both Derek and Riley have outstanding character and commitment to serve and risk their own lives in making this heroic rescue. Derek is also recognized for his many years of service and his leadership in mentoring the next generation of firefighters. Congratulations, gentlemen. Please.
Just thank you very much on behalf of all the Pinellas County first responders, and appreciate all the support that you've all given us. Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for coming and for all the support you guys give us.
Thanks, guys. All right. Finally, our last award is for the Florida Task Force III and Urban Search and Rescue Team, St. Petersburg Fire Rescue. Captain Jason Mante will accept your word on behalf. Jason, come on up. And I know we're going to also have some guys and gals zoomed in. Hey, guys, gals. Good to have you here. All right. This team has acted above and beyond the call of duty when requested by the state to respond to the city of Surfside and to assist with a 12-story building collapse. This group is our local members from St. Petersburg Fire Rescue that are part of the Florida Task Force III Urban Search and Rescue Team, which includes Tampa Fire Rescue and Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. The recipients of this award worked around the clock for eight days to assist and rescue and later recovery of the victims of this tragic building collapse. Just can't imagine. All being done while in the shadow of a very compromised portion of the 12-story building that remains standing. These men and women have been highly trained in urban search and rescue, hazardous materials, and medical care. The group is part of our Pinellas County Technical Rescue and Hazardous Materials Team. Also, four of our EMS physicians, including our EMS medical director, are part of the team as well. And everybody bear with me, but I'm going to read the names of the team. These are the folks that went down and partook in the very dangerous, but really necessary work for rescue and then recovery. So if you're there and I read your name, just wave your hand if you don't mind. Okay, guys? Dr. John Elks. Dr. Angus Jamison. Dr. Alicia Nasar. Dr. Andrew Smith. Captain Jeff Brady. Captain Jason Mante. Is it Mante or Mente?
Mante.
Mante. Captain Steve Santana. Lieutenant Dave Bennett. Lieutenant Joe Calderelli. Lieutenant Tim Collier. Lieutenant Randy Cale. Lieutenant Steve Lawrence. Lieutenant Adam La Provost. Lieutenant Richard Moore. Lieutenant Robert Winters. Firefighter EMT Brandon Burwick. Firefighter Paramedic John Blinkie. Firefighter EMT Benson Kane. Firefighter EMT Jonathan Durbin. Firefighter EMT Hans. Thank you. Hans Halad. Firefighter EMT Nicole Howard. Firefighter EMT Alan Nieves. Firefighter EMT Jason Quinet. And firefighter paramedic David Walker. Did I miss anybody there?
Nope.
Okay. I just want to personally and on behalf of the county commission, thank you for all your hard work. I just can't imagine what you went through. We really appreciate that. Oh, I meant to ask Council Chair Ed Montanerity, come on up as well, please. And you can take a picture when we take a picture and maybe say a couple of words if you'd like. So we'll go ahead and present this to you.
Thank you.
Take a picture here. Scoot over as far as we can. Okay, so if you'd like to say a couple of words and then. Council Chair.
Thank you, everybody. First, I'd like to congratulate the other recipients of the awards today. You know, it's a job well done all across this county. Also, I'd like to, you know, I'm accepting this award on behalf of a 20-person team out of the city of St. Petersburg. But in reality, it is truly much larger than that with the other departments being Tampa Fire Rescue, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. So really accepting the award on behalf of them as well. There's one more group I'd really like to thank, and that would be the family members of the men and women that respond out to these calls throughout the state without their support. You know, and these men wouldn't be able to keep a clear head. You know, they couldn't do their job without their support. So this is also for the family members. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Well, Chair Eggers, Vice Chair of Justice, County Commission members, thank you for recognizing all the first responders that we have in the county. I'm so proud of the members of the St. Pete Fire and Rescue that went down and did some very hard and courageous work to help those in need down in Surfside. Just a tragic situation, and I'm so glad that we stop, pause, and remember and thank the people that went and did that work. And we can never say thank you enough. We just marked the 20th anniversary of 9/11. And I don't know about you all, but I watched a lot of the documentaries, and a lot of them were focused on our firefighters. And we can never thank them enough for the work that they do. And I'm so grateful that you all are recognizing all of them today, and we're going to do the same thing down in St. Petersburg here soon. Thank you. Thank you, Council Chair. Thank you. Congrats again.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to our citizens to be heard. And we have several folks here. I'll make sure I get it correct here. And then we also have a few that are attending Zoom. And then we have a couple that are calling in. So I'll make sure I get all of them. Here we go. Okay. All right. First up, David Ballard Geddes Jr. And then Don Lechner will be next.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners. David Ballard Geddes Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Constituted as fact in Article 3, Section 2 is a predispositioned power that is intent on rising from within this Constitution. The fact of this predispositioned power is further claimed as being one of auspice and critical posture, as being one of greatest rankness and truly one's worst enemy as proscribed by George Washington navigated in his farewell address. As declared through a long train of usurpations, this rise of power is intent on dissolving this Constitution and assuming separate but equal stations among the powers of the earth as despots and tyrants, as written in the Declaration of Independence, simultaneously claiming rights to take the liberty, property, and the life of the Gentiles as due process under the 14th Amendment while so-called naturalizing its jurisdiction as a water jurisdiction, claiming its jurisdiction to be a maritime jurisdiction as of fact in its capturing of the water supply in Article 1, Section 8 of this Constitution, seen as a ship of war in Article 1, Section 10, as based on the evidence revealed in the reclaimed water variance application as of fact on its face. This government, using Hamilton's First Constitution as its medium, has assailed a high-seas act of maritime hypocrisy, bigotry, treason, and blasphemy, using liberty and freedom, breaking all 10 commandments under a falsely-faced constitutional act of self-evident sacrilege, violating any and all peace accords worldwide as to who has original jurisdiction over water. The assailing of such maritime powers is a high-seas violation and shall not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Don Lechner. And then Nancy Obarski will be after that. Hi, Don.
Hi. So good afternoon, everybody. My name is Don Lechner. I live in Clearwater. I'm here today just to warn you about the slippery slope of incentivizing for the receiving of vaccines. On your Thursday meeting, Barry spoke of virtually bribing employees with a $750 payout, thoughtfully to be given before Christmas if employees provide proof of COVID vaccination. One of you referred to this bribe as a carrot instead of a stick. Many times, the words "the right thing to do" were thrown around to refer to the taking of the vaccine. I have a few questions. What about those people who are medically unable to take the vaccine? Those who, because of religious convictions, cannot take the vaccine? Are they not doing the right thing? And what part of your job says that you should decide morality? That's nowhere in your oath. Upholding the Constitution is, however, and just a FYI, if you get paid to do the right thing, you have no longer done the right thing. Instead, you've taken a bribe to do the right thing, and that is never the right thing. There are those of us who believe using money from the American Rescue Plan should be used for families struggling to make ends meet due to job shutdowns. Or how about those whose businesses had to close their doors due to the lockdowns and limited capacity that were done at your very hands? Or why isn't it, quote, "the right thing to do," providing money towards other therapeutics for dealing with COVID? Nope, the only right thing to do is just to get a vaccine, and that's ridiculous. I just want to say here on record that I do not consent to you taking my tax dollars and giving them out as a bribe to perpetuate your lie that a vaccine is, quote, "the right thing to do." The right thing to do is to not bribe anyone. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. Now, you all need to do the right thing and vote against this item, or who knows what the next right thing to do will be? Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Nancy Obarski, and then John Fansteel. I messed that name up, I'm sure. I apologize.
Good afternoon, everyone. Nancy Obarski, Beach Trail, Indian Rocks Beach. At the Big C Meeting in July, Indian Rocks Mayor Kennedy said that Indian Rocks and the county, all of you are assembling a list of steps that you've taken to address the beach re-nourishment issue. Evidently, you're working together on this. While you're busy making that list of what has been done, I thought I would give you a list of what hasn't happened. You haven't held a substantive meeting with the beachfront property owners. A recent article in The Times quoted Kelly Levy as follows. "We reached out to every single person two or three times. We met with a lot of them, held public meetings, talked with everybody, and answered all their questions." That is simply not true. The last Indian Rocks beach meeting, only a handful of residents participated. It was held over a year ago via Zoom with a one- to three-day notice for all of us. How about a meeting where the property owners make the presentation, followed by a true question-and-answer session? Skip the 40-minute lecture on why we need sand. I think we all pretty much get that. Leave the terrifying Hurricane Elena pictures at home and make the meeting about us, those who are being asked to give up our rights. Secondly, instead of applauding letters from Charlie Crist that miss the point and sitting around waiting for the Army Corps to get back to you, how about taking the Army Corps to task, even if it means litigation? They get sued all the time. They're used to it. When I suggested meeting with the two Indian shores lawyers who compiled the informational brochure that was distributed to residents, one of the commissioners' response was, "We have our own experts." Forget about that they are two brilliant lawyers, and one is a former Indian Rocks mayor, who were offering you their information free of charge. More importantly, they're beachfront property owners and are among the largest taxpayers in this county, yet the county had no interest in hearing from them. Lastly, remind the state of Florida that the Beach and Shore Restoration Act charges them with the responsibility of maintaining our beaches. They don't get off the hook when the feds don't pay their 60%. Our beaches are currently designated as critically eroded, so the state's got two choices. Take legal action now to stop the Army Corps for misapplying the law to try to get out of paying the bill, or get out their checkbook and write a bigger check. And when they do, they're going to have their hand in your pocket. And I sure hope that when you adopt the budget tonight, you take that into consideration, that there is some money set aside, even in 2022's budget. In the event that we do not get our 60%, someone's going to have to pay the bill. And it's more important to make sure our beaches, the lifeline of the economy, stays healthy. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. John, I think it's Fansteel, but you'll correct me, please. And then Jeffrey Caputo is after that. Hi, John.
Hi, you did a great job on the name.
Okay.
Very few people ever get that close. John Fansteel, Indian Rocks Beach. Your job as commissioners is a tough one, and you certainly had a very challenging two years. So I want to thank you for all the extra effort you put in and a number of accomplishments you made. Tonight, just wanted to briefly talk about two things about next year's budget. One's a pretty minor point, and that is I strongly advocate the five-cent increase, or whatever it is, in sales in gas taxes. As Janet Long astutely pointed out, the people who drive in EVs are getting a free ride on this. And of course, people with highly efficient vehicles are not paying as much either. But if you believe that global warming is a crisis and if you believe that human-generated CO2 is a significant cause of that, wouldn't it be good to work towards reduce that? And maybe when EVs get to be 20% of, as opposed to 2% of the cars on the road, somebody will come up with a smart idea to level the playing field. So that's what I would advocate for next year. My second comment has to do, and it probably happens every year, it certainly happens in Indian Rocks Beach, that city officials, when it's budget time, start touting how they have reduced taxes when, in fact, they've increased taxes. There's been numerous articles, well, I've got one of them right here. Over and over, it says how you will save owners this, how saving residents, decrease in millage, and so on, giving back more money to residents. And in one article, it said that they are going to be returning dollars to taxpayers. I mean, that is just outrageous. It's so, Bernie Madoff wouldn't have stood behind anything as crazy as that. When you increase taxes, it's just honest to tell people. What problems we've had in this country over the last six, eight, how many years is people have lost faith in what government officials say? So I would highly recommend, and I'll be back to bug everybody on this next year if necessary, that the headline of this should have been, "Pinellas County Increases Tax 3%." I don't know what it's 2.56 or 3.4. I've seen it two different ways. But that's what residents care about. Millage is complicated. I've seen commissioners who didn't understand the basics of millage, and that's all they care about. They don't care about a millage rate. They care about whether their taxes are going up. So I would really hope that some of you make it a point that next year, when talking about taxes and talking to reporters, that you make it clear when you are raising taxes and not try to hide behind a decrease in millage, which frankly, I think is deceiving. So thank you for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Excuse me. That was, thank you, John. And now Jeffrey Caputo, come on up. And then we will go to, and I think that's all I have in the. Come on up. And then we will go, and I think that's all I have in the house for this topic. Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
Good afternoon. Jeff Caputo, St. Petersburg, Florida. Yeah, I'd like to dovetail off what he said there about concerning the millage. Definitely think there could be more transparency, maybe even a referendum. I don't know. But that's definitely something I want to talk about. It just seems like a lot of those type of things get passed under the cover of darkness. I know, not intentionally, but it seems that there could be a little bit more public awareness, input, et cetera, regarding the millage and the property tax increase. We definitely took a hit from COVID, and plus the affordable housing thing, like how does that square with affordable housing when property taxes get raised? Anyway, regarding the $750 per employee vaccine incentive, I object to that. I think the money could be better spent helping out those who have been affected, small businesses in particular. I had sent an email to each one of y'all. It's rather exhaustive. It was on a Saturday. I sent it. I don't think you may have had time to read it or have gone through any of it, but it's fully sourced. I don't think the $750 incentive, I think it's misplaced. The immunity in the vaccine, the efficacy, it's gone down from 95% to 65%. It's dropping. I've seen reports, 42%. Israel hospitals, 39% efficacy. It's not worth the money. There's evidence of great proportions of fully vaccinated breakthrough cases, hospitalizations, and deaths, in addition to those not vaccinated. So, the vaccine doesn't transmit, doesn't prevent transmission, according to Walensky from the CDC. It's all in that email I sent you guys. Even a leading vaccine guy from Oxford says that COVID vaccination programs do not show any hope for reaching herd immunity, and that's the ultimate goal, right? Herd immunity. So, if it's not going to reach that objective, I don't find the $750 per employee incentive money well-spent. We talked about the millage rates, and then even so, if money is a problem, which it always is, during the lockdowns, it was deemed, what's an essential business, what's a non-essential business? There was time, there was deliberation put into that. So, maybe a question could be, what are essential and non-essential county services, county products, county job positions? Put the same type of philosophy towards that. Monoclonals are being limited by the federal agencies through the Biden administration, and that's proven to be a great remedy for people in Florida. It's brought cases, hospitalizations, and deaths down with monoclonals. Now that that's being limited, we're back to the remdesivir, and that was actually pulled originally in clinical trials from causing renal failure, which then causes... Anyway, thanks for your time. You guys have a great one.
Folks online, Matt Lattelier from St. Petersburg. Come on up, Matt.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Good to see you all again. As I promised last meeting, when y'all were speaking about the ferry, that I would be back on this issue. So, I appreciate you taking this up. Just want to let you know, you should have a pack of letters from our board members that was mailed to you late last week. Also, I just want to let you know that the chamber understands that while the plan may not be perfect, we want to work with HMS ferries, you all, City of St. Petersburg, the next administration, City of Tampa, and Hillsborough County Commission to put together a better plan for the next three years and to bring permanent service. So, happy to answer any questions, but I would appreciate you all's support on this. Let's bring the ferry back for one more year and make it better for the years to come. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, I think that was all for citizens to be heard that are here. So, we'll go to online. Go ahead, Kat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have six individuals, three on Zoom and three by phone. So, the first individual is Ms. Sharon Calvert. Ms. Calvert, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application to speak on this item. And then, once you're unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address. You will have three minutes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Sharon Calvert, S-H-A-R-O-N-C-A-L-V-E-R-T. I live in Tierra Verde at 340 Pinellas Bayway South. On August 3, I submitted a public records request for a copy of the county's spending plan associated with the $189.4 million America Rescue Plan federal funds the county had received earlier this year that must be spent by December 31, 2026. I received a one-line sentence response from the county, from a Cecilia McCorkle, stating, "Currently, there is no spending plan as the program has not yet been developed. I ask today if there is still no spending plan for those funds. I believe they were put into the county's reserves account. If there now is a plan, this is a publicly stated public records request for a copy of that $189.4 million spending plan. The county is proposing to use $4 million of the COVID dollars for $750 incentives for each county employee who gets vaccinated. I ask whether the county incentivizes their employees to make efficiency increases or process efficiencies or any efficiencies that reduces the number of county staff needed and/or reduces county admin costs. In the real-world businesses, individuals, families must prioritize, become more efficient, make cuts, do more with less, and the county received hundreds of millions of dollars from the feds as a result of the pandemic. There should be no millage rate increase, and I would like to see the current rates reduced, preferably to where they were before you raised them last year, as property values have skyrocketed in Pinellas. The art funds have few restrictions on its uses. Taxpayers deserve to know where every cent of COVID dollars have or will be specifically spent at the ground level, not the 100,000-foot level, so there should not even be a whisper about any kind of tax hike in Pinellas: millage rate, sales tax, gas hikes, any tax hike. Unfortunately, the PSTA Transit Agency decided to move forward with their costly Sunrunner Central Avenue BRT that removes lanes of vehicle traffic on First Avenue North and South and Pasadena Avenue, as more people prefer using their individual vehicles, but paradigm shifts have occurred, and more people are telecommuting, using telemedicine, using online commerce, online banking, et cetera. And transit, while anemic in Pinellas before the pandemic, may never recover back to even its pre-pandemic and even ridership. PSTA clearly stated in their FTA federal grant request, they cannot operate that new bus lane-only BRT without a new funding source, and I believe they've maxed out their Advilair millage rate. That problem is PSTA's problem to solve and not the problem of Pinellas taxpayers, many whom warned of PSTA's financial issues. Pinellas county's taxpayers must not be put on the hook to bail out PSTA for any of their flawed decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Ms. Dixie Ross. Ms. Ross, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press *9 on your phone to speak on this item. And, Mr. Chair, it does not appear that Ms. Ross has joined us, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker, Ms. Virginia Frizzle. Ms. Frizzle, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application to be unmuted on this item. And again, that's Ms. Virginia Frizzle. And, Ms. Frizzle, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application to be unmuted on this item. And then, once you're muted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address. You will have three minutes.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
My name is Virginia. Okay, thanks. Virginia Frizzle, 14956, Margille, Florida. First, I'd like to thank the board for not passing the new gas tax. Also, I'm happy that the property taxes will be going down this year for an average savings of $50. There is an issue, however, that I'd like to address: the $750 per Pinellas County employee incentive to get the COVID vaccine. This is shocking, and I would be very disappointed at this. I do have two children, older children, working in this county. They give back, they serve, and I would not ever want them, you know, be forced on this, and I know that's not going to happen, and they would never take the $750, but it shouldn't be incentives like that in this medical situation. Anyway, I just want to give my two cents that I do not agree in that $750 incentive, or where are you going to take that from? Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Mr. David Happy, who's coming in over the phone line. So, Mr. Happy, if you could press *9 on your phone to be unmuted on this item. Then, I guess, again, press *9. All right. And then, once you're muted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address. You might have to press *6 to unmute your microphone. There you go.
Hi, this is David Happy from Carpen Springs. On behalf of Pinellas Walkers and Pinellas County Patriots, calling with two issues. Number one, Mr. Burton, you need to stop referring to employees that haven't been vaccinated as doing the wrong thing. Some of them may be vaccine-injured, some of them may be under advice from their doctor to not get a vaccine for whatever health reason they may have. Some of them may have natural immunity, but in all cases, it's none of your business. And for you to be discriminatory and derogatory towards some employees because they haven't gotten the vaccine, just because you happen to love the vaccines, it's inappropriate. We wish you would stop. You should not be incentivizing employees using our federal tax dollars to get vaccines. You don't even know how many people are going to get the vaccine as a result of the $750 bribe you've put on the table for them. So, all the ones that wanted to get the vaccine just get a free $750 of taxpayer money, and you don't even know that a single employee will take advantage of this. So, you may just pass out several million dollars to people that aren't been vaccinated just because you have an ideological preference to. So, you shouldn't be doing that with our tax money. It's really disgusting. But please, at a minimum, please don't discriminate by continually, inflammatoryly referring to them as doing the wrong thing just because you don't know why they are not that vaccinated. Also, on the millage rates, there should have been an option for no tax increase. Instead, you got an option for a tax increase, or a aggressive tax increase, or an insanely ludicrous tax increase. It's of no surprise that Flowers, and Gerard, and Long, and Justice, and even Commissioner Seale are voting for the most egregious, the most bad tax increase of all. We haven't forgotten, by the way, that you increased our taxes last year during the pandemic, that you really didn't need any of that money, that you literally, during what you asked us to filter in place, that you literally just took money from our savings accounts and moved it over into your savings account. You passed a tax increase, and you didn't even need the money. How gross is that? How fat is that in terms of the way that you have disdain for taxpayers, such as you just take our money when you don't even need it and you put it in your own bank account? So, now, thank you to Commissioner Peters for always doing the right thing. Thank you to Commissioner Diggers for at least voting for the most modest of these tax increases. But we're watching you. We don't want any tax increases. You shouldn't be doing this, but you just can't help yourselves from putting your hand back in our pocket yet one more time. But we're watching. We're paying attention. We realize what you did during the pandemic. We realize what you're doing now. Unfortunately, we have 2022 and 2024 elections right around the corner, where it'll be up to the taxpayers as to whether or not they want to support your continual lustful greed for more and more of our tax money.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Ms. Melissa Kaler. Ms. Kaler, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press *9 on your phone to speak on this item. And then, once you're unmuted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address. You will have three minutes, ma'am.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Kaler. I'm from 5636 Third Avenue North in St. Petersburg, Florida. It's the right thing to do. For who? You? $4 million to push a vaccine? Some of the right things to do are: honor your position you were elected into, to serve the citizens of Pinellas County, which should not include trying to coerce or bribe someone into making a life-changing medical decision. Two, spend our tax dollars wisely and appropriately without hidden agendas. Three, not believing our Pinellas County Sheriff is a constitutional officer who protects the people. He took an oath, but his actions speak otherwise. And finally, don't be followers. Following other counties and entities don't make it right. What is your payoff for doing this? I was taught at a very young age to be a leader. Don't be a follower. You are setting a major precedence for people to react quickly and solely based on the dire need of money, and that's not how to govern. Mr. Burton and the board, let me ask you a few questions. As I've stated, you have counters for all concerns, and as I have realized in the past 30 days, speaking at three different Pinellas County meetings, the people we've elected to office do not listen to us. But I'm going to ask anyways. Why is 1/3 of your workforce out? Aren't most of your county employees working from home like all of us? Number two, have you ever researched the science behind the vax shot? Children are not majorly affected. And number three, why would an employee receive $750 if they got their shots months ago without an incentive? That was a choice. You say, "Do the right thing," in your opinion. When did you become God? How about you let the people and employees you serve decide for making themselves, without being bribed, incentivized, or badgered, into making a medical decision about the future of their lives? As far as I'm concerned, this is a theft of taxpayer money that could be put to much better use. My last comment, if someone proceeds with this incentive, gets the shot, and then becomes disabled or dies, who gets the $750? I strongly urge you, as our public elected officials, to vote against this plan. Keep in mind, the decisions you continue to make for we, the people, might just cost you your job at election time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Melissa.
And, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Ms. Elizabeth Fox. Ms. Fox, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press *9 on your phone to speak on this item. And again, Ms. Elizabeth Fox, if you could press *9 on your telephone to speak on this One more time, Ms. Fox, you'd have to press *9 on your phone to speak on this item if you've joined us. And, Mr. Chair, it does not appear that she has joined us today.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming that that was all for citizens to be heard, right? Okay, just wanted to check. Okay, there's a few more speakers for Item 22.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. I just had a hand raised for a telephone caller. Would you like me to see if it's Ms. Fox?
Yes, please.
Who called? All right, ma'am. Once you're unmuted, if you could state, spell your name for the record, state your address. You'll have three minutes. You might have to press *6 to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, this is the first time I've called in. My name is Elizabeth Fox, and I live in Seminole. I just want to make a couple of comments. Make no mistake that this experimental COVID shot is an experiment. It's currently in Phase III trials, and unfortunately, people are not adequately educated as to the facts. Your idea to incentivize county employees with $750 to take this experimental medicine is, in my opinion, obscene. Not only is it a disservice to those who choose not to participate in this experiment, it's also a disservice to those who paid the taxes that you're planning to give away for this. I strongly encourage you to watch the FDA meeting from last week, where they decided overwhelmingly to decline approval of boosters for the general population. If you listen closely, you'll hear that many doctors testified at that meeting on the dangers of this experimental medicine, things that aren't being shared with the general public. Given the things that they shared, it would be irresponsible for you to use taxpayer money to try and coerce compliance, again, as others have stated, for what you consider doing the right thing. It's not always the right thing for the people that will take that experimental medication. They don't know what it will do to them. And on the taxes, last year, you raised taxes in order to build up your reserves. This year, you need to think about your constituents, those who elected you, and who you are supposed to be working for, when you're deciding on raising taxes in the future, this year or in the future. I ask that you consider the hardships that many have endured and are still enduring, along with rising inflation, before you raise taxes on Pinellas County residents again. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Mr. Chair, I don't have anybody else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have Items 4 through 17, and I have a couple of things I just want to mention. Item 11, under Administrative Services, a ranking of firms and agreements with eight firms for continuing mechanical, electrical, plumbing, professional engineering services. The upset limit over the five-year term is $500,000 per firm for a total of $4 million. That doesn't mean it's all going to be spent, but that's the upside, upset limit of that contract. That's Item 11. Under Item 13, under Management and Budget, there's a resolution supplementing the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget for unanticipated revenue from the Department of Treasury, for emergency rental assistance program, and from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for reimbursement of red-tied expenditures. Under Item 15, Solid Waste, there's a ranking of firms and agreements for professional continuing engineering services pertaining to the Waste-to-Energy Plant. It's a five- services pertaining to the Waste-to-Energy Plant. It's a five-year agreement. There are three firms with an upset limit of $7 million each for a total of $21 million limit over those five years. And that is it for the, under the consent agenda, and I need a motion for approval, please.
Watch your first one second.
Commissioner Long on the motion, and I didn't hear the second. Commissioner Flowers on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to the regular agenda, under County Administrator Departments. First, under Administrative Services, item 18 is a change order with Manhattan Construction, Inc. for Design-Bill Professional Services pertaining to the St. Pete Justice Center.
Yeah, this is a change order that adds $375,000 due to unforeseen conditions. This largely resulted from asbestos testing, encapsulating of walls on the three floors of the construction.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? Okay, I have a motion, please. Commissioner Long on the motion, Commissioner Flowers on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under the Airport, item 19 is an interlocal agreement with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services at the St. Pete Clearwater International Airport for fiscal year 2022. Motion by Commissioner Long and second by Commissioner Flowers. Are there any questions? Sorry about that, Barry.
I'm good.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under Human Services, item 20 is a funding agreement with the Homeless Leadership Alliance of Pinellas for Bridge Housing and Emergency Shelter for Homeless Families. Barry?
This provides case managers and shelter beds and leased apartments for St. Vincent de Paul.
Up to, what is it, $300,000?
Again, yeah, funding amount not to exceed $300,000.
Okay. Okay, motion by Vice Chair Justice and second by Commissioner Gerard. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 21, interlocal agreement with a public defender's office for jail diversion, juvenile crossover case management, a therapist, and information technology position. Barry?
Yeah, this general fund, this continuation of a program that provides those services that the chair just outlined.
And there's five interlocal agreements totaling $1.233 million for fiscal year 22.
Correct.
Any questions for staff? Have a motion? Commissioner Flowers on the motion. Commissioner Justice on the second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 22, interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County, City of St. Petersburg, and the City of Tampa for the Cross Bay Ferry intercity. Mr. Burton?
So I'd like to just kind of open up with a little bit of commentary. You have a staff report in your packet, and over the last month, we spent a lot of time kind of deciphering where this agreement was. But let me just give a little history, because we received a lot of emails. We received a lot of emails that talks about the alternative transportation method and getting people out of cars. But that's not what this is about. And in coming here three years ago, and where this had began, it was really talking about an aspirational goal of creating a waterborne transportation system. And that is a worthy goal. I love the ferry. I think it's a great amenity to have. That doesn't necessarily mean it's a regional service or provides day trip service. At the end, and so we, you had a one year that you funded it with BP dollars. You had two years of an extension with the aspirational goal of building up service to where it could be self-supporting. At least, that's the way it was portrayed to me. Now, we go into a request for a four-year agreement that, at the end of the four years, does not have any goal of establishing weekday service. So it's not for commuter service. And I learned a lot through this process. We're trying to kind of figure that out. The real focus is, and I think you're going to have some speakers speak to this, because actually, a lot of this, because of the timing, has been really difficult for me to even get my arms around about where it's going. But there's really good goals that they're working on in terms of around Tampa and Hillsborough with the McDill service, and they're working towards that. And so, those goals are lofty, and it's a viable service. But as you saw in the emails, even at this, they don't believe that after this period of time, that there's a commuter service available. So what does it provide? It provides service that people can commute back and forth. But there's a lot of commuter-type services that people use that bring tourism in. We see that up and down on the gulf for different types of services. It doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that we should support the funding of that. The real goal here is to try to define, is this lead to what we're trying to achieve? And I can't answer that, because they're aspirational. There's nothing in the contract that fixes an outcome. There is certainly the hope and the idea that there would be federal transportation dollars available, because it's very clear that any purchase of boats, which would be the only way in which to expand the service, has to be borne by the government, not by this service. That's not in the operating pro forma of the plan. And so, you'll be looking at federal funding to be able to do that. And there's certainly federal funding that is available through the capital infrastructure plans. But it's going to take time to know whether that is available or not. So you're asking for a staff recommendation for something that is purely aspirational. Right now, the only agreement we have, and there's speakers that are going to speak to this, and they will probably disagree, but that is that it's a, it's a special events and weeknight, I mean, weekend-type service, and usually mainly for entertainment. The goal, though, is to grow that, but there's nothing contractually that gets us there in this agreement. And that's the concern. Is it a good thing? Absolutely. Does it add vitality to downtown St. Petersburg? Absolutely. But that doesn't necessarily mean we should participate in funding for everything that adds vitality to each community of our 24 cities. And so, you know, that's where you have to make a judgment call. We've tried to analyze it and give you the best information we could come up with. We certainly needed to be much more involved in this plan for the last, you know, couple of years to give you a better outcome. We, they did respond that, you know, we could possibly raise fares. I think, you know, you would pay more for a weekend pleasure boat ride to go over and have dinner than you would for maybe a weekday service where you're using it five days a week. And of course, we fund roads and things like that. So if it was commuter service, it's a different type of use. So there's a lot of different pieces of this. And so, they have some ideas on how they could possibly grow that. But those are all subject to renegotiations, because they were never included, because we weren't part of those negotiations over the past year. So there's just some, a lot of pieces that we can't answer. We provided a staff report. Our recommendation is, I don't see the value. But again, happy to answer any questions or any other discussions. Jill has been the point person on this. If you have any questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to try to answer those. But I'm sure you're going to hear more from other speakers.
Any questions right now, or do you want to hear from the speakers? Okay, I don't see any questions. So we'll go, we have four speakers. So we've got two that are here. We'll go start with Ed Turancheck and then Matthew Miller.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. County Commissioners, Ed Turancheck.
Matthew Miller, President of HMS Ferries.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is a little bit unorthodox, but I think Commissioner Smith has signed up interactively. I think she's got a limited time, so if we can defer.
Yeah, that's, in fact, they asked that, and I just drew a blank. So I apologize.
No problem.
We'll get back to you in just a minute. Yep, Mariella Smith, sorry about that. Yeah, we were all set up for you to go first, and I didn't do that. So go ahead, Kat.
And we're unmuting her just now. Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Mariella, or Commissioner Smith.
Hi, Commissioner Eggers. Good afternoon. I am Hillsborough County Commissioner Mariella Smith. Several years ago, before I even thought about running for office, I was a South County businesswoman and a Sierra Club leader, speaking at the first ferry announcement event in support of that vision of connecting our communities with ferry service across the bay. I am even more enthusiastic today about this project that reduces cars on our roads, reduces nitrogen pollution in our bay, and uses our waterways to take people to the places they want to go in an incredibly cost-effective way. I'm here today as a Hillsborough County Commissioner and the Chair of our county's transit agency, HART, to ask you to join with Hillsborough County and the cities of Tampa and St. Petersburg in our partnership agreement to continue the Cross Bay Ferry service. The plan has always been to build on this Cross Bay Ferry service and expand it into a premium congestion-proof transit service connecting South Hillsborough County with the cities of St. Petersburg and Tampa, finally culminating in a service that will require zero operating and maintenance subsidies, because this operator has made us the unprecedented offer of taking on those costs when we get to that point. And we had hoped that we would be at that point now, but we will get there soon. And I am really hoping you will join with us in advancing this great regional transportation project, a transportation project that brings customers to those very businesses that have been hit hardest by the pandemic, restaurants, shops, and theaters. You know, South Hillsborough County has about 250,000 people now, almost as big as St. Petersburg, and we are growing at a phenomenal rate. As a resident of that area myself, I can tell you that we have a keen interest in taking the ferry to Pinellas County for dining and shopping and concerts and events, and not to mention your beaches that can be reached from the ferry terminal via your bus system. So with your yes vote today, the current six-month seasonal service between Tampa and St. Petersburg will be expanded a little bit each year until we can get to that full ferry plan with four ferries running between St. Petersburg and Tampa and South Hillsborough County year round. And I can't wait for that day. I hope that we will all continue working together to build a robust ferry service that will take thousands of cars off our crowded roadways and bridges every day and connect our region with a fun, congestion-proof travel option. And thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Appreciate your being here this afternoon with us. Okay, Ed and Matthew, come on back. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have information to share.
And Mr. Chairman, while Ed is passing that around, I just wanted to thank you. It's an honor to be here, and I apologize, I was on here in person last time. Again, honored to be here. We understand that there were questions from the last meeting, and I believe Ed and I have worked hard to hopefully answer all the commissioners' questions or concerns about the project. And we prepared this very short presentation to further answer any questions you might have. And I'll turn it over to Ed to lead that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I apologize for last time. I had broken a tooth, was on the way to the dentist, and got caught on the interstate and had to divert off. Well, I had no cell phone, so I couldn't participate. Mr. Chairman showed me every courtesy. Thank you.
No problem. And because you're both here, speaking one after the other, you'll have six minutes instead of the three. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Burton, thank you very much for the time you afforded us. Jill gave us incredible amount of time, and there's a lot of interchange and exchange. There's probably some disagreements about how to see this project. So we're going to lay this out. But, Mr. Burton, we appreciated the time together and look forward to working with you this year, we hope. We have a very short presentation. We have done extensive surveys of riders, and we know that around 62% of the people taking the Cross Bay Ferry took it only because it's there. They made the trip only because they could use it to get to the other destination. Because the bridges have become so congested and so inconvenient, people are not engaging in commerce and doing the things they want to do, because the bridges are too congested. The other 42% said they took the ferry instead of, they took the ferry instead of making a planned trip. So it's diverting people from that perspective. We know where the ferry passengers are going. On the next page, page three, is a breakdown of what do people do? They dine out, they visit, they go shopping, they go to sporting events. There's only 3% of the people that quote-unquote "joyride." This is used as a transit option to take people to places where they want to go to enjoy life. And that's one of the parts of transportation. It's for economic development and mobility. The next slide shows where they're going in St. Petersburg, and this is half, the percentages here, you can multiply by two, because there's another half that's going to Tampa destinations. Let me go to the next slide that shows how much people are spending. Almost 70% of our passengers said they spend more than $40 per person. That's a huge number. When people go to athletic events, they're spending money in that venue and at vendors in that venue, and they're not necessarily spending it with local merchants in downtowns. Here, the people are taking the ferry, going and visiting and spending their money in and with local businesses. The next slide goes to the question of commuter and congestion. 42% of the people said they took the ferry instead of making a planned trip. Now, Hillsborough County asked the Florida Department of Transportation to run the regional transportation model to determine what percentage of the trips on Howard Franklin are commuter versus something else. 80% is something else. So the notion of taking people off the bridge, and by the way, there's been a bit of confusion about this, that service that we run runs on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday nights, that takes people off of Howard Franklin at times when it's most congested. I'm going to turn this back over to Matt, who has done some financial analysis that may be helpful to the commission.
So if you go to the slide with the local government projected net cost for versus the five partners, if you just look at the first, the first year of this agreement, the 2021, 2022, if you extrapolate out the passengers that we had pre-COVID, and in that year, we had four and a half months of service, and we were on schedule to break our previous passenger records, we believe that this season, that will be starting, if this is approved, within three weeks, that this service for this season for seven months will far surpass the records we had before. And if you use those projections, along with our revenue projections based on the fare structure, the, you will get a refund based on these projections, based on these estimates, all the four local governments will, based on our revenue share model, further reducing your, Pinellas County's subsidy to this operation. In the next table down, if the governments are able to get the Florida Department of Transportation funding, it further reduces it. But just over the course of the four years, based on these projections, every, every year, you will get more service for less money. And this is with the final year being the final path to permanent service with no subsidy by Pinellas or St. Petersburg, Hillsborough, or Tampa to provide the same service. Next slide just shows you the permanent ferry project overview, the South County to McDill Air Force Run, and then the St. Pete to Tampa Run, you know, and then for the intercity service, it would be a triangle run from St. Petersburg, Tampa to South County. The next is just a rendering of the type of vessel that we use. These are the vessels that we've designed and built for the New York City ferry system. Our company designed and built that, and we operate the New York City ferry system. So this is a proven design. It's cost-effective. There's nothing new here. It's a proven model. The next slide, as I mentioned, the permanent intercity service will not require an operating subsidy going forward.
We're sticking with your six minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, did you have a closing comment you'd like to make?
I think people largely view this, first and foremost, as an economic development project. project with a transportation benefit on the upside in the here and now. The long term, there is a business plan, a comprehensive plan, to provide transit service, intercity transit service, 365 days a year without additional operating subsidies. And those of you know, I've been working on transit a long time, and those of you involved in transit know this statement's true. There's no transit system in the country, no line that runs without operating subsidies and deep ones. This is a historic opportunity to do something that's extraordinary and unique, and I think this gets lost sometimes in the forest, or the trees obscure the forest. It's a big deal. This is a huge opportunity for us, and we're here to answer any questions you might have, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you for your courtesy last time.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. I've got another speaker that wants to come forward, and then if there's questions, I know you're not too far away. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, the last individual who pre-registered is Hillsborough County Assistant County Administrator Tom Fass, who said he is available to answer questions if the commissioners have them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all then, right? That's all the speakers?
Yes, if there's no questions.
That's all I had as well. So, okay, so if you have any questions, clearly, we have folks here who can answer or try to answer your questions. Commissioners, any... Yeah, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you. And Ed, you all should just come on up and... First question is on the route, because the South Tampa or the South Hillsborough portion is very interesting to me. What's the route that they would take? Because it's not clear on the map. Is it a direct route? Is it, do they have to go to, will they be picked up and then go to Tampa and then come to St. Pete? What's the route for South Tampa folks or South Hillsborough?
So, Matt, you want to discuss that?
It would be counter, they'd be opposite vessels going opposite direction. So it would go from South County to St. Petersburg to Tampa, back to South County, and then a vessel going the other direction. So you don't have to necessarily go the whole route to get off and wait for the next one.
All right. And then the...
If you look at the last chart, it sort of explains that there's intercity Monday through Friday, there's four direct routes between, short route, South, you know, the routes will, there'll be a couple vessels every night running from South County to St. Petersburg and back. So you're never going to have to go to another city to get to your destination.
Okay, all right. And then in previous years, not withstanding the first year, but in previous years, we had funding from the state. It was a, and so I kind of saw that as a great partnership between the locals and the state and the, and so why didn't we, why don't we have state funding this year?
Thank you, Commissioner Justice. Handoffs are really ugly. All you have to see is the U.S. relay team in the Olympics that we didn't win, right? And there was a handoff between the city of St. Petersburg and Hillsborough County in this, where Mayor Kreisman and Hillsborough County talked about transferring this partnership agreement over, and there was an existing partnership with HMS to do this very service. And in the process, you know, inter-local agreements were set out, operating agreements were set out around June 8th, and that went to all parties. I think FDOT was interested in it, but they're on a July 1st timeframe, and my understanding is that it's pretty likely that they'll participate going forward in future years. But that's hearsay. I think Mr. Fass may have talked to DOT about that, or the county might have some insights, and Mr. Fass is on the phone, so I don't need to speak to the county.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Commissioner Seal.
Well, Commissioner Justice kind of asked what I was going to ask, but I'm still not clear. So on your chart, Monday through Friday, there will be four trips directly from St. Petersburg to Tampa.
Yes, Commissioner, this is for permanent service.
Starting when?
Well, we, tomorrow, Hillsborough County is voting on a public-private partnership agreement that has a projection of design and engineering and permitting in about 30 months. Negotiation for about, and we then go to the next phase, we are estimating that service could start 40 to 45 months from now. That can be jumped ahead. Mr. Burton talked about the possibility of federal funding. I think there's an interest in, Hillsborough County advised us of this, that on October 5th, there's a deadline for a ferry funding. It's only for boats or for existing projects. So I think it's intention of the county to work with the transit agency to try and procure a vessel. Mr. Miller can talk about the financial consequences for this project if we could start with our own vessel in year four, but they're very, very positive. So we would like to be in the position to compete for that. HMS has offered to Mr. Burton and others that we will help. And by the way, I think the suggestions that came out from Mr. Burton and the staff about looking at some of the operating models and revenues is absolutely fair, and HMS has provided a letter of commitment to work with the county to increase fares and decrease subsidies. So I think, I thought your conversation was very helpful at the workshop, and I think we have committed as far as we can go, but there are four other governments, but we're happy to work with you. But we, if we can, we think we'll be very competitive, Commissioner Seal, because if you approve this agreement, we'll have existing service. We'll have existing service coupled with an operating commitment for a long time. And on buses, you have to say, we'll operate for 12 years. On ferries, you have to say, we're going to operate for 30. In this case, we can make that representation to the federal government, because you have the nation's largest water transit operator making a commitment. It's not illusory. We provided you the specific language that's in the contract that's going to the county commission tomorrow to say, this is our intention. So I think we can be very competitive, and I think that if we could get a boat in, procured, I think you're likely to see your subsidy go to zero. But Mr. Miller can speak more to that.
I think he summed it up very well, but if you have any additional questions.
But Commissioner Seal.
What would the time period be for that grant, applying October 5th?
We've done this once before, so we applied in late October, and we heard in early June. So if they're working in that same timeframe, late May, early June, they give you a notice of award. You know, under the terms, I think the county attorney explained before, in the terms of your agreement that you're looking at, every local government has an opt-out provision come June 1st. So it's more likely than not we're going to know about whether we have a notice of award. As I explained to Jill and Mr. Burton, that it's still going to take a time to procure and build something like that, so it's not immediate relief, but it probably could be in service by year four. Would that be a fair statement?
But Commissioner Seal, to your point, the current agreement is an operating subsidy for a leased vehicle, for a leased boat, completely separate from their permanent service. Permanent service, they've said, is the responsibility of procuring four boats, the government, whether us, Hillsborough, however that shakes out, and obviously federal funds. So we have to look at this agreement separately from what is projected where you want to go. Those are aspirational. That's separate from the operating agreement you're entering into. The other thing, because I've had the question about what about one-year funding? We have to give notice by May of next year if we're to continue the operating subsidy for the following year. So depending upon the timing of whether or not those are due, you, one year may not work.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I think all the governments would be willing to grant more leeway on that, because we're already flexing on this, right? The second thing is if Hillsborough County, whatever entity owned the vessel, the economics of this change. They just change. And I think you have the president of the company saying it's probably going to be zero. So we would have to change the operating plan, but it's a material condition that if we got a boat, that charter cost goes away, and all these are subject to the local government saying, all the terms and conditions are different, let's change, let's change those numbers.
Commissioner Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, yeah, there's a lot that you just said right there, that there's a few other glitches that I'm not sure that you've thought about, so let me just share a few things. For clarification purposes, please. First of all, there's several of us on this commission that serve on Forward Pinellas. Forward Pinellas, several months ago, established a Waterborne Transportation Subcommittee, and we have been moving along in that committee with some very innovative and very new advances in technology and deep and thoughtful discussions about ways in which we can use our waterways for the first time ever for really good public transportation options. So you know, you and I, Ed, have been working a long time on this issue. Secondly, as a result of those conversations, we on Forward Pinellas, some of us also serve on the Board of PSTA, and through that relationship brought them to the table, and guess what? We now have a public-private partnership with the Clearwater Ferry. We have designed, you'll be interested in this, Mr. Miller, I hope, we have designed a ferry. It's fabulous to look at, and it's electric, and which really rings my bell in terms of environmental resiliency and sustainability issues. So the model is there to bring down that federal funding. In order to bring down that federal funding, there are three specific things that you have got to include in your ask that involve resiliency, sustainability, economic equity, and racial equity. Now, the only entity in our region that is a federally designated recipient that can receive those federal funds that will be used to cross county borders is TIBARDA. And we had a little bit of that conversation, some of us will remember, that we're at the TMA meeting last Friday. Commissioner Regers, you were there as well. So the opportunities are really terrific. The timing is terrific. But the one question, and I know we've talked about this too, here you are today, at the end of the day, we've already had our first public hearing on our budget, you've had all these discussions going on with Hillsborough County. We started this partnership with the city of St. Petersburg several years ago, and with no knowledge given to us on the county commission or county administration, a deal was made to transfer the whole thing over to Hillsborough. Now everybody's coming to us as the ugly stepchild, because we have, you know, planted our feet and we have questions that we want answered. I am letting that go. I, it still rankles me, but in the spirit of cooperation and coordination and moving collaboratively forward, I'm letting that go. But what I cannot let go of is the idea that, and I want to speak to what Barry said about aspirational thoughts and aspirational goals. Well, in the world I live in, that begins with a vision and the courage to take the first step. And so I want to know that when you talk about year-round service, you're talking about commuter service that can get people off the Howard Franklin and give them enough faith and confidence. They can get on the boats in St. Pete, get over to Tampa or Apollo Beach or wherever else the destination ends up taking them someday. And I think that that's doable and it's possible, especially with the opportunities to pull down the federal money. I don't know what the state is going to do, but our Florida Department of Transportation, District 7, has not been more cooperative and willing to work with us, and I believe they will. So I'll let my comments rest right there. But I saw you shake your head, Mr. Miller, on that daily commuter service. That does not make me happy.
No, I was, if I could just clarify, if I can, just a couple of things. I agree, Commissioner, that this is an opportunity for truly regional service. If you look at Tampa Bay, it's one of the largest metropolitan areas with a body of water that has no ferry service on it. We operate a ferry, a transit ferry service in Oklahoma City, a man-made waterway. So we view this as an opportunity for the region. We've always gone about it as a regional approach, and we truly believe that this, we've been working on for years with all four government entities and the state, to get the commuter service from South County to MacDill as the start for this, that's year-round. But with that will automatically come the year-round intercity service. Those two are connected. They are separate agreements right now, but when we get the commuter service year-round to MacDill and South County, those boats are used regionally throughout Tampa Bay. You know, they're just not going to be for that commuter service. So I was just, in my head is, I agree with you, and I do. Our vision, our vision is why, is for people to live in St. Pete and be able to commute via ferry to Tampa. I used to live in Seattle, and there are people that would take a ferry for an hour to get downtown to Seattle to work. So that's possible here in Tampa Bay, in the region. That's number one. The second is the electrification of ferries. We are fully supportive of that. In fact, Hornblower is the first, and I believe the only, operator who changed over and converted a conventional car passenger ferry to all battery. We were the first, and we're the only operator in the Western Hemisphere to do that. We're the first to get a hybrid vessel. We're the first to just launch, a month ago, a hydrogen-powered vessel. So we know how to do this. You talk about actually happening, Hornblower, our company, has done it, is doing it, and can provide it here to the Tampa Bay community. We already have proven designs, proven boats you can ride that truly are environmentally friendly, and that's something that we could bring to this community as well. So those are the two things I wanted to say.
Thank you. Are you finished? Commissioner Law, I want to get a couple others.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Gerard.
Yeah, I'm getting a little confused between the permanent service and the, what we're talking about right now, because the dream sounds great. You mentioned, when I spoke to you earlier, Ed, about how long it takes to construct a vessel. Once you order it, how long does that take?
It takes about two years.
Two years.
If you were to say yesterday, Matt, go build a boat, we could have it operational no later than two years.
Wow.
Especially if we already use an approved design, which we have. I mean, if you look, you know, Hornblower's the, you know, built more boats since World War II than any other company in the U.S. You know, for New York City ferry system, we designed and built 38 ferries up there that are in operation or proven. So our concept was to use a proven design where we know exactly what the cost is, we know what the operational cost is, we know what the maintenance cost is, we can bring that stable here. We don't have to go out and reinvent the wheel. So yes, ma'am, we would use a boat that's proven, and we were at height of production, we were turning out a vessel about every 12 months, but that production line was going. So it would take a bit of time to get the production line going again, so we could do it probably in about, no more than two years. I know that.
And could that be?
Oh, yeah, I meant, we were producing every 12 weeks at the height of our...
12 weeks?
Yes.
Oh, my. That's better than two years.
They're going to be producing till 2040. I knew what he meant.
Okay, I, I'll just keep listening for now.
Just before I go to Commissioner Peters, Barry, did you have something?
I want to get clarification, because I received an email from you that stated that commuter service between St. Petersburg and any center, commuter, daily commuter service, meaning you pick them up in the morning, you drop them off at night, is not feasible inside this four-year window. So I want to be clear in terms of what we're buying, because we kind of said that before, that we had aspirational goals, and then we thought, we thought, regardless of whether it was, we thought that that meant moving to a commuter model. What is being proposed is after 6:00 PM service.
Correct. And if I...
And if I, we should just get this out right here, right? We ran commuter service between downtown Tampa and downtown St. Petersburg, and it was terrible ridership. We would recommend not doing that again till you develop the whole marketplace. We had two or three people riding the ferry, and we said, recommended St. Petersburg, this is not working, let's look daytime shifted. There's a lot of reasons for that. It's one boat. What can one boat do? Number two, there's not a lot of people that live in South Pinellas that work in downtown Tampa, and we know that from a lot of data. However, we do believe that St. Petersburg to West Shore can be a robust service. But it's complicated, because we have looked at three different locations there. All would have to have improvements, all would have to have zoning changes, but the bigger issue is that there has to be a connecting service from wherever you go into West Shore, into the West Shore Business District or Tampa International Airport. So there's a potential good market there. It's something that I, TIBARDA and other entities should work with. I know there's different plans for transit, regional transit connectivity, but the problem is when the ferry vessel gets to West Shore, there's no there there. So you have the added challenge of people getting from where they're going, from the ferry, to the destination. That doesn't exist for downtown. It doesn't exist for St. Petersburg, and with the Bus Rapid Transit system coming online, it's going to be able to move people all up and down Central Avenue corridor from the beaches to downtown. I mean, if there's a vision, Mr. Chairman, we have this opportunity to connect the beaches to Ebor by a seamless transit option, really on the cheap compared to any other option, and this ties together the major economic tourist sports venues in the Tampa Bay area. I think our citizens understand that. They want to go back and forth, and it's okay, that's not a commuter trip, because the trips they're making go to lifestyle that makes a difference to the businesses and the livability of this area. So that's the vision that is within our grasp, and in this case, you have an operator willing to cover that, you know, operating maintenance cost, which is extraordinarily rare. Mr. Chairman, thank you for that latitude.
Yeah, I'm sorry, were you finished? Yeah, go ahead.
I found another one. So who would be responsible for applying for the money to purchase that vessel?
A 5309 agency needs to do that.
And that is?
And that's either Hart or PSTA.
Hart or PSTA.
And Commissioner Long, you know about TIBARDA. Ideally, it would be most sense if everyone went together and said, let's go get this done, because in this case, you've got operating commitments of an existing service. We don't have any other, necessarily, existing service.
So the deadline is October 5th? Is that what you said?
Yes, that's, I mean, Hillsborough County is the one that pointed this out to us and said, why don't we go for this? So again, I think Mr. Fass is on the line, he can, they've been evaluating it.
They haven't sat down and talked about who's going to do that? Or were they just waiting for this meeting for some resolution here?
Well, I don't know if they've done any work, but if there's no existing service, there's no path forward.
Right, I understand that, but it doesn't, as a grant writer, I have to say it doesn't take, it doesn't leave much time. But, okay. Well, yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Peters.
Thanks. I don't know that I necessarily have a question more than comments, because this information is great. It's the exact same information you gave us three years ago. We were supposed to vote on this a month ago, we didn't get it then, and we certainly didn't get it until today. And I know our staff have been asking for information and asking for information, asking for information. I'm not sure why you waited until today to give us this information. And everything you're talking about, you got 30 months for design and permitting, all of this, again, is aspirational, has nothing to do, what you're talking about has nothing to do with this proposal for the next four years. So I've got problems with that. But my bigger problem is, is that three years ago, this all was the promise, that we're going to have other ferries going from MacDill to South County, never happened. What I don't understand is why this 30 months of permitting didn't start two years ago, didn't start three years ago. This all was the plan for now, that you're talking about aspirationally later. So for three years, we funded this, I think maybe four, I'm not sure, positive, because I've been here for three years, and we've been funding it for three years. I didn't support it then, I certainly am not going to support it now, not for this business plan for four years, when we're talking about aspirational things that sound like they're going to happen now. I don't understand why none of this was done last year. Why weren't we talking to the legislature last year for this session? Why weren't we talking to the federal government last year for this, all of this project? Why were we not working on permitting and everything else three years ago when you promised us three years ago that you would do this? And so I just, I'm not in support of it, because the aspirations, you know, you're talking West Shore, well, that sounds great, well, we haven't even started on that, that could be 10 years down the road. Until you have a concrete plan, I'm not confident in spending money on a project that has a benefit to the city of St. Petersburg but not a countywide benefit. And I know you'll tell me Howard Franklin and all that kind of stuff, but these are the same words and the same conversations and the same data set you gave us three years ago, and the conversation hasn't changed. So the needle has not moved, the needle has not moved. We're still at the exact same place we were before. And so I'm just disappointed that you didn't start the permitting, that you didn't start all of this last year or the year before, because you knew you were coming. And I do feel that we are the redheaded stepchild, Commissioner Long said, and she may be willing to let that go right now, but I'm not sure that I am. I think that the respect to the staff should have been managed, and they should have had this information when they asked for it. And I'm just not that comfortable you coming to us at the 11th hour and talking about aspirations, and you've not talked about this four-year plan. You've not talked about this four-year business model, you're talking about what could happen, maybe, just like you told us three years ago. And so I don't have confidence, because you've not taken one step forward to make the second thing happen. You haven't moved one step forward on permitting and anything else, and I just don't think that the citizen should be paying for this year after year after year when that needle hasn't moved in four years. And so those are my comments. It's not a question, so you don't have to rebut on that, but that's just my thought.
Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, not an excuse, but I've been working at somewhat of a disadvantage since I wasn't here for the previous conversations, but I've been trying to play catch-up by doing research and having conversations with those who were here, not these colleagues, but a former colleague, as well as meeting with staff to talk about this proposal. So I have a few questions. My first question is, I guess, to Jewel, because what is being asked for for ferry service for the item that we're to vote on today is different, somewhat different than what is being asked for, which is an extension for a four-year service contract. So would the language need to be amended as it relates to what is before us today? If a motion is made to support this contract, how would that need to occur if we're talking about ferry service but two types of contractual service?
With the contract that you have before you has a four-year term, and I would note it has, to my knowledge, been approved by the other three local governments, so.
Jewel, could you speak into that?
Yeah, the contract has a four-year term, and it is, it has been approved by the other parties to the contract, which are the other three government entities. So we can't, for instance, unilaterally decide that we want a one-year contract, because the other three entities would have to go back to their councils and commissions to agree to that. If the will of the Board was that they were willing to go forward with one year, you can give notice by June 1st of any year, including next year, and basically unilaterally terminate the contract. So if the will was, one year we're satisfied with, you can approve the contract today, and you still have the option to cancel it by June 1st, by giving notice by June 1st of next year.
And if we did not cancel by June 1st, but decided to continue, would there need to be an item to come back before us for the additional three years?
No.
Okay.
Unless there were modifications made in some way that did not comport with the agreement that is before you today. But no, you would be voting on a four-year term with the terms set forth in here and the monetary contributions that are established in this contract.
Okay. And then this would be to Mr. Miller and Mr. Ed. So in order to potentially establish service that would support weekly service through the week for employment potential purposes, and based on what you have here in your information, the travel time is 55 minutes. So at 55 minutes, in your estimation, how many boats would you need to be viable in order to encourage persons to want to take the ferry in order to get over to Tampa and then back and forth for employment purposes?
Do you, Commissioner, I think you would need at least two, preferably four. So you would have three in service at any one time, and a fourth as a backup. And I, and just to add to that, I do firmly believe that if we, you know, once we establish the commuter service for South County to MacDill, the next step is to get to, you know, St. Petersburg to Tampa, because again, it's not uncommon in all the other metropolitan cities in the U.S. to be on a ferry for 50 to 55 minutes to get from point A to point B to get to work. So it's possible here.
My other questions have been asked regarding communications with Secretary Gwen from the Department of Transportation or anyone else, so you definitely need to seek additional funding in those areas. But I want to say this, I understand what Commissioner Peters said, but I also want to just unfortunately remind us that sometimes when the federal government makes dollars available, they make them available if you already have the service in place. So they are looking for you to expend dollars and to provide the service, and then they decide if they're going to make, if they are going to make opportunities for you to apply to continue the service. That is what I'm seeing now. We had our discussion, and I shared that, that in order for us to be in line to receive any possibilities of waterborne transportation services, we have to already have a service in place. So it's putting the service out before you get the money. I do know that PSTA, we've talked about our ferry service, our boat service, Commissioner Long has already referenced that, with the electric boat, we had a mock drawing presented to us. I serve on TIBARDA, now serving as the Secretary of Treasure. We've not really had a very strong conversation about having that boat service or even being in partnership with the current ferry. So I guess that is a missed opportunity that can be reconciled by a presentation. If you, if there was that conversation, I wasn't present. But I'm, and I'll entertain and certainly appreciate anything you have to lend, because I'm learning as I go. But as I shared with you guys, I see why it's such a difficult conversation, and I am glad to hear today that with the quote-unquote "transference" of who's in charge now, that perhaps some balls were dropped along the way. Because I shared with you where I was the day I found out that Hillsborough County had voted on the service, and we hadn't had any conversations or dialogue, and I did share with you that I felt kind of bad about that, because it's like, okay, so now we're going to look like we're the bad people, because if we don't do it, we're going to have a whole lot of people mad at us. If we do do it, we're going to have a whole lot of people mad at us. I do think, and I'm going to be done after this, Mr. Chair, I do think that for us to remain competitive as a metropolitan community, looking at the regionalization of transportation that we have coming forward from TIBARDA, because yes, we will have those connector bus routes that will then be able to take people into different directions if they were to catch the ferry, if we decide on that. We're in the planning phases on that through TIBARDA, so we don't yet have anything in place. The Sunrunner is moving forward, but that's primarily St. Pete to, down to the beaches for that. So I do understand that, and I agree, this service has, there has to be a ferry service in place in order to even apply for the DOT dollars. And there are few, because I was looking on the internet myself after we talked, there are very few services that would even meet the criteria to be in line for those dollars. And so it's going to be competitive, but only competitive amongst a very small group of ferry service providers, which makes your chances even that much greater to be able to receive those dollars. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Long, did you have something?
And part, it's partly in response to Commissioner Flowers and in response to some of the comments that Commissioner Peters made, because I, you know, I get that we're all frustrated. It's really frustrating to work in the realm of public transportation.
I'm frustrated too.
I know. What, but consider this, in our region, the first regional study on transportation was done in 1972. It's 59 years later, and we're still in this spot, having discussions about how to move the region forward. And part of what takes so long, Commissioner Peters, and why we didn't do it last year or the year before, whatever, whatever, whenever you put an idea on the radar of a transportation agency, guess what? First thing they come up with is they have to do a study. And DOT will tell you that that's required by the state, and it's required by the feds. And when we got our money for PSTA for the Sunrunner, we worked on that for six years before we finally got the money. And if it's possible, Mr. Chair, Mr. Blanton is sitting in our audience, and he is the executive director of Forward Pinellas. He's very aware of the conversations we've had about waterborne transportation, and he might have something to add to the conversation with regard to timing and how long it takes to do X, Y, and Z, if you will allow.
Well, yeah, I will in a minute. If I could just have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
That would be great. Well, first of all, I mean, I think regardless, everybody in this room, and you can go out and talk to folks, water transportation of some type in this area makes sense. And so I feel like with that idea in mind, we're being kind of hijacked along the way for an idea that we all agree to, but perhaps the implementation and what's been going on here is a little questionable. The, I think Commissioner Long mentioned that at the MPO, we are, we have established a waterborne transportation committee where a lot of conversation is going on between partners. That would be FDOT, it would be PSTA, it would be thoughtful conversation about transit, real transit use, and also real tourism use. And this is talking about waterborne transportation for Pinellas County, not for St. Petersburg alone, not for Palm Harbor, but for Pinellas County, and ways to travel up and down and perhaps even around to St. Petersburg. So I think that kind of thoughtful holistic approach to transit services on the water is part of what we should be doing. There is, the issue that, and I don't want to get into answering the question right now, but I think there is a lot of issues with what this particular service is actually going to provide. It's not going to provide transit across, it's not, and we're talking about this four-year contract, we're not talking about the aspirational goals. So that's an issue. And I mentioned a minute ago, I think that there are other partners that are, that we should have at the table, Hart, PSTA, these are our transit services, these are the folks that have tax dollars associated with their business, if it makes some sense to provide for funding. I guess really, Commissioner Peters touched on, you know, disappointed in the lack of progress, the late arriving discussion this year. I kind of feel like we're in between a rock and a hard place, and I think there's just too, and I can let that perhaps go, but I am really just not sold on using tax dollars, our ad valorem tax dollars to support a service that really doesn't provide anything that's in this, in this, in our aspirational goal. that's in this, in this, in our aspirational goal. Our aspirational goals that are being looked at by our own entity through the MPO. And I think that's where it needs to begin. That's where the work needs to be had if we're gonna have that real holistic approach to it. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable moving forward with the agreement. You know I have been along the way. I begged for you to show me some tourism things so we could maybe look and justify some TDC dollars. Never got that. The argument in the beginning was this is gonna be a transit service. And I knew it wasn't and it isn't. I just haven't seen that, that, that change, that improvement. And so I'm, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable supporting it myself at this time. But again, I'm gonna circle back to my first comment. I think everybody here knows that our waterways need to be taken advantage of. And I don't, I just don't know that I'm willing to go forward because we were told that it would, we wouldn't be paying for anything anymore. I mean, this is what we were told. You're just gonna, this is a pilot, then it was that first contract, and here we are again. And it seems like there's still a lot of work to be done. There's still a lot of thought process. I mean, the fact that Hillsborough County had to mention to you about applying for a federal grant. I mean, just, there's a lot of work to be done. And so I just wanted to, I don't have questions, I had more comments than anything. Whit, if you'd like to come forward and, and make a couple of comments.
Mr. Chair, I would like to apologize about something if you'll provide that opportunity.
Just a minute, please. Because I really want to get.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman and Commissioner Long, Whit Blanton with Ford Pinellas. You asked about the timing of things, and I do want to say that the Florida Department of Transportation has told us consistently, and I think they've demonstrated consistently, that if you have a plan, if you have a well-vetted plan, well-thought-out plan between partners, they'll fund the transit service. And to Commissioner Flowers' point, you don't necessarily have to have the service in place, but you do have to have the agreement and you do have to have the commitment. Sun Rail in Orlando was funded without existing rail service because they had a firm agreement. We are working on interlocal agreements with the Clearwater Ferry. It's not quite done, but it's getting real close and I, and I feel good about that. Having an interlocal agreement commits you to work in together. And that's what the Department of Transportation looks for in any funding agreement. The notice of funding availability that's out there now that's due in October, you know, that is a federal discretionary ferry boat program. It is competitive. Showing that there is a high level of congestion on I-275 certainly helps that. But the most important thing is having the commitment of partners who have an interlocal agreement and are committed to doing that. Until you have an interlocal agreement, you're not gonna get federal funding and you're probably not gonna get state funding. So I just want to speak to that. And, and the timeline, you know, I, I don't think you have to do these detailed studies, but I, I certainly would not go out and try to permit a dock for service that wasn't existent or where there wasn't a commitment to deliver that service. That does take time and that is a big, heavy lift. Fortunately for St. Pete and for Tampa, we don't have to permit new docks. For West Shore we do, and I wouldn't go there until we established a starter line and started building up ridership and showed that it could be successful. And you may remember that the Jolly Trialley, which is a very successful service running up and down the beaches and running up and down Alt 19, started out as a three-day service. It has then expanded to week, a, a long week service. So you start slow, incremental, you get a good project going, you build from there. And that's a tried and true method of public transportation. So this is a tough decision, staff's in a, in a, in a tough spot and I'm sympathetic to staff on this one. But I certainly understand that you do have to have vision, you have to have a commitment to work with partners. And then you iron out some differences as you go along. And if that can be done, then, you know, I would encourage you to at least consider that. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start down there, Commissioner Gerard.
Don't go away, Whit. Whit? Yeah, yeah. So what are your feelings about being able to work over? I know we don't need it for this four-year thing, although the commitment and the, the partnership looks great, you know, going forward for other projects. Do you see us being able to work out the governance issues long-term in terms of owning these boats? Who's actually running this service? Who's, you know?
I mean, those have to get worked out, that has to get resolved. There is, in any endeavor where you have a partnership, you probably have a lead agency that is going to be, you know, responsible for that. Whether it's Tibarta, whether it's Hart, whether it's PSTA, or whether it's Pinellas County. I mean, it can be any one of those. But that's what the commitment signs you up to is a set of performance objectives, a set of communication protocols. And, you know, I think that's just really important. Because what is a partnership without good communication?
Right.
Commissioner Seal? Oh, will you finish, Commissioner Gerard?
No.
Yeah, Commissioner Seal?
Well, I've been listening to everybody and I mean, this is, this is a study in frustration. I guess what I really need to know, and Commissioner Gerard asked the question, who's gonna apply for this federal fund? My vote hinges on knowing whether PSTA or Hart has committed to applying for this by October 5th. And if they haven't, then I'm, I'm not there. Because that's part of my whole support for this is if we can look at the long-term, I also have other conditions based on your answer.
The, the whole process, if you're frustrated, we're frustrated because we didn't stop work on the project Hillsborough County transferred to Hart, Hart transferred it back to Hillsborough County. We can't apply for a federal grant. We have committed our resources to assist with that. The idea of applying for the federal grant was identified by Hillsborough County and was being pursued by Hillsborough County and Hart. It has a question that we can't answer, but maybe Mr. Fast can. It's not our job.
You indicated that, is Mr. Fast still on the line?
I think he's been monitoring it. I, I, I don't know where that stands right now. My presumption is that Hart would be the entity that would be responsible for applying for this specific grant.
Ed, can we see if he has any thoughts on that?
Sure. Mr. Fast, we are unmuting you. You are unmuted, sir.
Okay, yep, Tom Fast, Hillsborough County. Yes, we've been in discussions with Hart regarding applying for the grant. And part of those discussions have been that Hart would have to submit that grant on behalf of Hillsborough County. I haven't asked them for a firm commitment that they would do it, but in terms of our conversations, that's the direction that we've been looking at going. If that helps.
You have 14 days.
Commissioner Seal, just for the record.
Hold on one second.
We have done that mod once before.
Ed, just, I just want him to finish, if he's finished. And then we'll get back to you, Ed. I'm sorry about that. I just, is he?
I, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Ed. Come on up.
In 2013, Hillsborough County applied for the Hart ferry grant. It got $4.87 million. The problem was the NEPA and the site issues and everything. And the county decided they could not use the grant in the time available and return the funds. And it goes to the comments made about, Mr. Blanton said about design and engineering and all the hoops that you've got to go through. You know, we're, we're happy to be here and we made a commitment to Mr. Burton. We'll work hand in glove with you. This is our first opportunity that we've had to have a serious engagement with Pinellas County staff. Shame on us and we apologize that we should have known better. But no one put us on alert to say, you know, engage with the Pinellas County Commission. But we are here now and it will never happen again and we'll work with you closely. The, the things that Mr. Burton requested of us, that you requested of him, HMS is committed to and it's gonna require a change to the operating contract if we go beyond one year. But we're committed to pursue the very things that you asked for. And that's the best we can do as private partners. We're not the contracting agency, so we can only kind of do what the contracting agency did. You've done this three times before, you've never seen us there. It was handled by the mayor of St. Petersburg. So it was like, we're here as you requested and we're happy to be here and we commit to working through all the issues and looking at the service. And, you know, if you do one year, you know, we'll do our best to make the numbers work and report to you and take a look at how we stack up for the second year. If you decide that the first year's not good, everyone's got the unilateral ability to say no. And you'll have enough notice to do it. And, and, you know, I, I, we apologize that we weren't more engaged with you. I should have known better. But, you know, we just presumed too much. So we're here, we're engaged with you, we're committed to be engaged with you, to work on the issues that you, I think are important to be evaluated.
Okay. The only other thing that I would like to say is, yes, if you look back three years ago, you know, there could have been some permitting done. We've had COVID in between. We've had leadership change in Hillsborough County. You've had mayors, mayors change. Politics have come into play. Let's be honest about it. And so I am will, this is like really getting out there for me. I have done waterborne transportation across the world. And I am willing to do this for one year with the following conditions, until June 1st. It's not even a year, it's about eight months. You need to work through Whit and the MPO and the Waterborne Group to have some buy-in and some factual information. If you don't apply for the grant by October 5th, my question to Jewel is can we non-fund this? I mean, this is September 21st today.
If you approve the contract today, you're certainly gonna be on the hook for at least the first year of funding per the terms of the contract.
We can't put in a non-funding clause of some type? That, oh, then that destroys the contract for everybody else.
It does. You cannot change the contract before you. What, what you have in there is the ability, as we've mentioned, the ability to terminate on any year as of June 1st. You also have a fiscal non-funding clause in there, but that's nothing that would come into play until the next fiscal year.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah, well, this is an out-of-the-box thought. But what is the possibility that we can use our connections that we have with our federal folks to extend that deadline of October 5th?
There's, there's no, it's a, published in the Federal Register, it's a firm date. You can't change it. It's already published.
I don't like that word "can't."
Well, I think that's a pretty much as legal certainty as you can get. I defer to the county attorney, but it's been duly published in the Federal Registry. They would have to, they would have to delay everything to change the date. So.
Well, but I guess my point of this is, I think Whit was very eloquent in what he said. If we don't have an interlocal agreement, if we don't have something that we are committed to, at least for this year, we have no possibility. And we've already funded 800,000 over four years. And we all know that every transit service in Pinellas County takes public subsidy. I do not know of any transit service that does not.
In the world.
In the world.
Please, I mean, let's be serious and tell, tell it like it is. It's just not possible.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think that Commissioner Seal summed up a lot of the frustrations that we've been dealing with. And, and I think kind of hit where I, I don't know where all of us are. It's really been, normally I can peg the votes, I have no idea today. But that's, those things that you heard from Mr. Burton that he got from us, we don't want that working on for year two, we want that working on starting tomorrow.
I understand.
And so in the conversations you and I had last, the other day, I think were, could be very fruitful for all of us if we go down that path. And so I think we've been talking about this thing for a while, so all those things considered, I move approval.
Second by Commissioner Flowers. So, yeah, just real quick, if this, where's the money coming from? And I'll get to you, Commissioner Peters.
It, it's not within our budget, so it would be out of our reserves or contingencies. We'd have to come back to you with how, in fact, to pay for the contract.
Same source of funds perhaps that we've been talking about on our millage rate issue on the budget. Commissioner Peters?
So just for clarification, this is still not transit, it's entertainment. Am I right, Barry?
This would come out of the general fund.
No, 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 I'm talking about this four-year contract, even if it's a one-year contract. It's not transit, it is entertainment.
Yes, it is, it is weekday and weekend service, weekday service after 6:00, weekend service.
So it's strictly for entertainment. And, and just like I said with the emails last time we got, probably 98% of them came from St. Petersburg, mostly in the downtown area, most in the very affluent area. Every time I've tried to ride it, there was a lightning game and there was no way to get a seat because they were all lightning holders who all paid $200 for a ticket, who certainly can afford to pay a $25 fare to get across the bay without it being subsidized with, with government funds. And so as long as this isn't transit, and it's not transit. And, and for three years, we were promised that it would be transit. For three years, we, we had the interlocal agreement that they could have worked on for the last three years to do what they're saying they're gonna do now. And they just haven't produced, regardless of COVID. They certainly could have moved on, regardless of leadership change. This was something that everybody agreed on and they could have been moving forward. Governments, everybody could have been moving forward and they haven't. And so I'm not sure where your confidence is coming that this entertainment for this four years has no, no way is that going into transit. So if we vote for this, we know for the next four years, we're not getting transit. We're only getting entertainment that the, most of the people that use this can afford to pay without it being subsidized. And you're asking us to have people in North County who don't benefit at all from this to pay for it. And, and people, you know, on Clearwater Beach, people on Indian Rocks, Reddington Beach, you're asking people in Laillman and in Ridgecrest to pay for this. And everybody that's using it to date, based on their survey alone for this entertainment, has the disposable income for that entertainment. And yet you want again, have the backs of the citizens pay for this when the benefit isn't countywide. And, and it's not transit. I, you know, I get when they are ready to do an interlocal agreement for a grant application that we would be a partner for that. I absolutely agree with all that. If they could make the wish list come true that is not in the next four years, none of that is in the next four years, I certainly would be at the table. I'm a big supporter of waterborne transportation. I'm a huge supporter of the Clearwater Ferry. I think they've shown how, how very successful it could be. But this is a four-year contract that isn't transit, it's entertainment. And I think TDC should pay for it, I think somebody else should pay for it, but I don't think it should be coming out of a general revenue. That's just my, my, my opinion.
Can we get it from TDC?
There was no, there was no tourism-based showing for it. That's what we asked for. I've asked for that since the beginning and none of it was tourism-based. Okay, we had a motion in a second. Are there any other comments? Did you, Pat, Commissioner Gerard?
It doesn't bother me that most of the emails that we got came from St. Petersburg. Last time I looked, they were still part of this county. So I, I think that it behooves us, if we vote to, to fund this for the next year or next four years, to stay involved and, and to insist on moving this thing forward. I mean, it's not just, we're a partner in this, we're a partner in this. And we need to take an active part in it. And I, and I do think it's aspirational. I think it's something that many of us would love to see happen abundantly in the future, but I think this is the way you have to start. And I think this is, the timing is right, right now to do this. There's money available for vessels, there's, there's money available for transportation in general. And I, I think we miss the chance if we don't suck it up and do this again. But again, I think we have to not just wait till next June for somebody else to bring us the information so we can vote on it or not. And I'm not talking necessarily about the commission, I'm talking about staff needs to be at the table the whole nine months. So, and let's figure it out.
My, my only comment is that we, we, we as Pinellas County have decided to, to take on waterborne transportation. And we have that task force and we're working on it right now. In fact, there was, there was the temptation of coming to us for next year's budget for some money, but wasn't quite ready. And they realized that the way to do this- some money, but wasn't quite ready, and they realized that the way to do this is to build relationships and build the conversation and to develop the plan further. Because that plan, and again, it's very preliminary, involves transit and involves tourism. And to me, that's at the heart of what Pinellas County is, is really looking for and what, what they're all about. So, I, anyway, any, yes, Commissioner Flowers?
Just real quick, primarily, this ferry service is entertainment, there is a small amount of individuals, there are a small amount of individuals that use it for work purposes. For years, PSTA ran service out on the beaches where those beach communities did not pay into PSTA. I served on PSTA at that time.
They still don't.
But the reason we provided, the reason we continue to provide the service is because of what we saw to come in the future, which would be employment opportunities for persons to get back and forth, and utilization for our tourists to be able to get from one side to the other, which now those tourists use the trolley to get from the beach communities down to St. Pete and other parts. So, we have, we, there's a precedence where we have supported those services with county dollars because they help support tourism. The other thing is, if, even if it is for entertainment, those people for entertainment purposes are paying for services, and that goes back into our revenue pots, some kind of way, all different types of ways. I do understand and fully agree with all that has been said regarding the previous conversations and commitments and promises. What I want to see, I fully support all of Commissioner Seal's requests, but what I also want to see, I want some reports as it relates to the movement towards, that's why I asked the question, how many boats do you need to make it a, a full opportunity for persons to utilize it for getting back and forth for work? So, I would like to see the movement towards that, because I think that'll also play a larger role in the self-sufficiency of this boat being in service after. And I want to go on record for saying that if, if this passes and you do well, don't come back four years asking for more money, because Renee's going to be no, so don't even call me asking for a conversation, because it's going to be no, if it passes today. Because what, what I have been promised today is that it will be self-sustaining at that point in time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you're welcome. And that, that was, that had a familiar ring that I've heard before, too. I know, I know, I know, I'm not, I don't mean to downplay what you said at all, I agree with, I, I agree with your comment. Any other comments? We have a, we have a motion, I'm assuming, from what I'm hearing, it's a motion for one year. No, it was a motion for... So, the item is a four-year agreement. That's the motion, and that's the second. Okay.
However, if I'm on the prevailing party, I have the ability to bring this back and cancel this contract before June 1st, is that not correct, Madam Attorney?
Yeah, you certainly could, at, at any time prior to June 1st of 2022.
Thank you.
Don't forget.
I'm not forgetting.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's not prevailing side, it's the county as a whole, as in our contract, an opt-out provision.
Correct. And that, last thing I want to say is, I believe the general fund has supported the jolly trolley going to Dunedin and Safety Harbor. That's been for entertainment reasons, it keeps people from drinking and driving, which this ferry may be keeping people from drinking and driving across the Howard Franklin Bridge. So, I mean, that's just one other thought process. We have supported, the Clearwater Ferry is going to be entertainment, too, gang, so...
There will be an element of it, correct?
Correct. Thank you. I just couldn't...
But not exclusively. All right, we've, we've talked enough about, did you have anything else, Barry?
Not till after the vote.
So, I want to get back to, the motion is for the four-year agreement, the second, and we have that in the contract to opt out each year, it's already in there, and I'm sure you'll remind us.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, in May, or hopefully April, it's just around the corner, so that we don't let it slip. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So, I'm counting, one, two, three, four, five. Any opposed? Nay. So, the motion passes five to two, and we move on.
Commissioners, if I could just make a couple of comments, because, you know, this, this item, there's, there's several provisions within that, that now that you voted in the affirmative, that we can begin negotiate, trying to renegotiate terms, in, including the amounts, you know, you couldn't amend this contract, but there's no reason that amount can't be increased tomorrow, okay? There's no reason that you cannot get sub sponsorships and significantly increase some of that, but those are all goals. And so, I didn't want to include them in the discussion because I didn't, you know, you needed to make the decision whether you wanted to go forward or not. I only say that because we also have the issue that's coming up, as you mentioned, we do not have a funding source for waterborne transportation, we don't have a program. And so, the issue of Clearwater Ferry is a discussion item. I had my first meeting with them last week, and they say, well, you should participate. Well, why should I participate here and over, not, you know, over here, there's a consistency there? And so, there's a lot of discussion to be had on these programs, that needs to come back to you as part of the 2022 budget, I'm sorry, 23 budget, that will come to you beginning in January. There's a lot of issues here.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and to that, to that end, when you talk about the other revenue sources that you're talking, right now, you're, you're mentioning, and to what Commissioner Flowers talked about, you know, no more funding going forward, I mean, those conversations should have been, been had for the last four years, and that's the part that is, as you've pointed, several people have pointed out, that's frustrating.
No, I get it, I, I just, I wanted you to know that those items, if, if you agree to go forward, which obviously you saw the staff recommendation, but if you agree to go forward, we need, we're going to start working on this now, and they're going to push, or I'll bring you another recommendation, that'll be to deny future funding, so...
Okay, well, I'll, I'll be, if I talk more, I'll just be, relieve you more frustration. So, we'll move on, I'll move on to item 23, road transfer interlocal agreement with the city of Tarpon Springs for the transferring acceptance of specific roadway segments and easements.
Correct.
Move approval?
Second.
Commissioner Seal on the motion, Commissioner Long on the second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, item 24, companion item with the one we just did, declaration of surplus easement and assignment of the easement to the city of Tarpon Springs.
Second.
Commissioner Gerard on the motion, Commissioner Seal on the second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to authorities, boards, constitutional officers and councils under fire protection authority, amendment to the Fire Protection Services Agreement with three municipalities.
And we're required to pay a portion of these costs, there's totals of about $56,000.
And as for the Clearwater, we'll replace a marine rescue unit, Seminole add a staff support vehicle, Tarpon will replace a fire apparatus, and the reimbursement of the unincorporated portion of capital improvement projects. So, all those are included in this.
Correct.
Any questions? Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Justice, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, item 26, under county attorney.
Under item number 26, I'm asking for your authority to initiate litigation in the referenced lawsuit.
Commissioner, Commissioner Gerard on the motion, Commissioner Long on the second. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, item 27.
I have nothing new to report under item number 27.
And they will be meeting again in...
October 6th, I think, 7th, 6th, no, I got it right, October 6th will be the next meeting of your redistricting board.
And as planned, that, and as planned, that will be televised, as all future meetings are televised. Thank you, Kevin Knutson, appreciate that. Okay, on to item 28, county administrator reports.
Commissioners, as you're well aware, we've seen the percent positivity from COVID cases decreasing significantly over the past several weeks. We were over 20%, we're now at the last seven-day percent positivity averaging at 11.8%. So, we're cautiously optimistic. A lot of that, obviously, is because people had COVID, and so, you know, now that, that amount is coming down. Our daily case count, 438, that's extremely high, but it's obviously a big improvement from the over 900 that we were having just a few weeks ago. Reminder that from our death rate, that is a lagging indicator, and so, while we're seeing death rates higher, the highest peak during the pandemic was 74 in one week last, for the last couple of weeks, we've had anywhere from 85 to 124 deaths due to COVID. Our hospitals are reporting slight decreases, and so, that is a very good thing, and especially, you know, with the call with John Hopkins, they've recorded a significant decrease on our hospital call. We remain optimistic we're turning the corner, but, you know, that is well to be seen. We have also seen an, an improvement in our fire rescue transports, which was straining our fire departments, however, over the weekend, we did have a high day. So, some improvement there. The monoclonal antibody site is, they, as of last week, they've had 4,135 individuals, daily count has been slightly under 200. Again, that can, that site continues to operate on Coachman Road in Clearwater. I think the other things, you know, the, the information about the boosters, as you're well aware, we, we establish a central site that we're preparing for, dependent upon the outcome, how the rollout of the booster shots occurs. The idea would be, you know, you still go back to the place that you got your, your vaccination, we obviously provided a lot of that, and so, we want to have a, a site for folks, but it'll be dependent upon how, in fact, the state and federal government rolls out the boosters and what type of time period.
So, Barry, right now, it's just a testing site?
Right now, it is just a testing site, and we, we do have it as a testing site, and we put that out, it's mid-county, it's located at 7150 114th Avenue in Largo, open daily, nine to five, no cost, no appointment needed, but encourage people to bring their insurance information. And so, that is a testing site, it could become a booster site if we need it, that's one of the reasons we wanted to have a large site. We cannot operate multiple sites for an extended period of time, and so, that site is up and running. We also still have the Center for Health Equity at St. Petersburg, and they're open Monday through Saturday, nine to five, and again, they're testing anywhere from 700 to 1,000 individuals daily. We still do a number of our health outreach sites, and also, we were able to establish the data dashboard that is now available on our website. So, that concludes my update.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just, and I asked Dr. Cho this morning, and he emailed me back, and I was just trying to understand the lagging timeframe on our, our death count. Because we get a lot of numbers, and we go over them very quickly, but I, from what you're saying is that the last two weeks of August are the numbers that we reported today, almost 250 people in Pinellas died from COVID. Is that the timeframe, am I getting that basically accurate?
I asked Lordas to, to come up to help with that, and, and because I'm not sure about how the reporting occurs from the state, where we're pulling that data from. So, I'd ask for Lordas to clarify that.
Lordas Benedict, Assistant County Administrator, and I actually talked with Dr. Cho about that this morning as well. Those figures that Barry just gave, the 85 to 124 deaths per week, were for the, the end of August. That's the...
So, the last two weeks, we had 124 people one week, 122 people the next week. I just think, you know, we, we go over these numbers so rapidly, and we're all a little numb to it, I'm afraid, and I just want people to remember that 250 people died in Pinellas County at the end of August, and that just to redouble your efforts to make sure that you're safe, your family's safe, that you're doing everything you can to avoid this horrible, horrible thing that is taking off our friends and our family members. And I just, I wanted to make sure that we brought that to attention.
Thank you, Commissioner Justice.
And Commissioner, and it was 74 deaths in one week was the highest we had, you know, during the pandemic, which was overwhelming to all of us. And you're right with your comments, now it's just a lot higher, and we just say the numbers.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we're moving on to appointment to the, do we have ballots? Okay, thank you, of course we do. Cat, that was a silly question of me, of mine. We're going to, appointment to the Pinellas County Transit Authority, the current person is Vince Cox, and there is three other individuals who have expressed interest as well, Steve Hendershot, Richard Tonges, and Scott Long, so we'll have the ballots passed out. Thank you. Commissioner Seal, there's a ballot there for you, for PSTA representative.
Thank you, sorry.
No problem. Okay, and what, you know, we'll, Cat can take care of that, we'll move on to item 30, which is appointment to the South St. Petersburg Community Redevelopment Agency. We have five folks that have applied, I think only one is eligible, and that would be Tara Centeno. So, Commissioner Peters on the motion. Second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to appointment to the Suncoast Health Council, we only have one eligible, and that's Pamela Hamilton. Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 32, which is a reappointment, appointment to the Pinellas County Construction Licensing Board, we have five reappointments and one new appointment, all six are eligible. Do I have a motion for approval? Commissioner Peters on the motion, Commissioner Seal on the second. All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we'll go back to the PSTA vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the commission voted to reappoint Mr. Vince Cox to the PSTA.
Okay, and what was the vote?
It was six to one.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll move on to item 33, which is county commission, new business, board updates, and administrative procedural. I think what we'll do first is we'll go to the annual performance review of our county administrator, and then when that's finished, we'll, if there's any additional thing that anybody wants to bring up at that point. So, we will move to that, and I am going to, oop, of course, I got out of my, hang on one second here. All right. So, it's been, it's been four years since we actually did a, kind of a market study on county administrators, not that there's any changes being proposed to the contract, but I just felt it was important that we kind of take a look and see how, how we're doing in taking care of our, our county, county administrator, and, and then having, having that overview, and I'm going to ask Kimberly Crum to... And then having that overview, and I'm going to ask Kimberly Crum to come up, or whoever's going to do that presentation, just a short presentation on what we're seeing and how things match up, and then we'll get to the performance side, and if there's any comments or questions on the, on the performance, we can do it at that point. Jack Loring, good to have you here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much. Jack Loring, Human Resources Officer with the Classification Compensation Function. And I'll give you the executive summary as far as the information we were able to gather. You see in the report that we were able to collect information from seven other similar counties here in the state of Florida that had the same form of government and relatively larger populations. There were three counties that did not report back to us regarding our request. On page two...
Jack, I was showing eight instead of seven. Did I miscount?
No, sir, you're right. I did get one late that came in, so the number did change to eight.
All right, no problem, go ahead.
On page two, you'll see a table that provides some additional details about the tenure in terms of years of service for that particular county. All of the county administrators have an employment agreement. I've also included information about the next expected increase, what month that is expected, and in some cases, what amounts are expected as well. I have the salary listed for current September 2021, and then you'll see a column that says FPLI adjusted, and that's the Florida Price Level Index. So this is an index that enables us to allow for geographical differences between these counties and adjust salaries based on what those would be equivalent to here in Pinellas County. And you'll see there's not much difference when we look at the average and the median values, whether we adjust those salaries or not, the averages and medians are very, very And then on the lower part of the page, you'll see a graph. I wanted to visually represent where Pinellas County compares. When we look at this particular group of counties, you'll see, for example, that the red line, that horizontal line, is the average of all of these counties, and then Pinellas County is situated at 110% of the average. We have Broward at 143, and then on the low end, Manatee at 77. We did test the data to see if there were outliers, and we found that all of these values fell within two standard deviations of the average. And so they were, they were all within the range of variation. On page three, I've included some information about influences on pay. So one of the things I checked for was whether or not there was a significant correlation between salaries and that geographic differential. It wasn't there. There was, there was no real correlation. So then I checked to see if there was a correlation between years of service with the county and pay levels. And there was. There was a connection there, and I represented that graphically at the bottom of the page. You'll see there is a relationship between years of service on the horizontal axis and then pay levels on the vertical axis. On the following page, four, I've included some information to give you a graphical representation of total cash compensation. So what we collected was current salary, auto allowances, and then also deferred compensation contributions, so that we would have a total cash compensation picture. And in this bar chart, you'll see that Pinellas County is in the upper third of the group. You'll see the current salaries listed, and then another extended piece onto each of those bars represents the additional cash compensation, and I have a detailed view of the additional cash on the next page. In the table at the top of page five, you'll see the annual deferred compensation that's provided by each county, the auto allowance on an annual basis, and then those two values combined as the combined additional cash. And then finally, total cash compensation in the far right column. And at the end here, you can see at the bottom of the page, I had three conclusions. Number one was that the administrator's salary and total cash compensation appeared to be highly competitive with this particular peer group. I also mentioned that because of the study and the timing of the study, we know that many of these salaries will be changing, probably within the 90-day period that I mentioned, but maybe even sooner in some cases. It might even be 60 or 30 days from now. And the expected wage growth, most of the counties that responded said that they expect an increase somewhere between 3% and 6%. Lastly, I said that although this data supports that there's a connection between years of service and incumbent salaries, it's not a complete picture. It doesn't tell us about the other influences on pay, for example, how many years as a county administrator any of these individuals had before they got into their current roles. It's not captured here. Also, it doesn't tell us anything about relative training or education, along with that experience and performance, of course, which is critically important. Happy to answer any questions.
Jack, thank you for that, and I'm sure, I don't know if you're anticipating getting the other three cities or counties input, but if you do, update that for us.
I'll be happy to.
Down the road. Any questions on the survey, the market study that you put together? Yeah, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And I know you talked about size of the counties, and there is probably an obvious correlation, but it'd be interesting to know what their county's budget is, as that's a pretty significant responsibility of the position and the evaluation.
Yeah, I agree, Commissioner. Especially when I looked at the chart, when I looked at the graph on page three, and I saw that above the red line, we see Broward, Palm Beach, Hillsboro, and Pinellas. It's almost like you could draw a separate parallel line for those four counties, and I believe the difference there is probably budget. So yes, I believe that's, that's an important ingredient that should also be included. We don't have it for this particular study. We also, because we were focused on counties that had the same form of government, that excluded Orange County, Duval, and Miami-Dade.
And it's obvious, yeah, if you have a higher population, you're going to have a higher budget, you're going to have more people, and you're going to have more employees, which would be the other number. Would be interesting to know how many employees that are, report to that administrative position.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jack? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the hard work, and it's good to have that information.
Happy to be of service.
Of course. Kimberly, thank you. Okay, back to the commission, and anybody who would like to make any comments about our county administrator. Go ahead, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think we all appreciate the service, especially the last couple of years. But I tell you, I don't have a campaign coming up anytime soon, but if I did, I would go through your report that you gave us of all the things that the county accomplished that you have in the September 20 to 21, and I would just make a campaign piece out of each of those areas. For those of you that are on the ballot next year, free campaign tips for you. But, you know, I think when you came in, being from the outside, there was a concern about the integration into the 24 municipalities and all the different factors that run in. But the idea being a voice from outside wouldn't have some of those long entanglements and some of the history, and I think that's probably one of the best things, is you've navigated that beautifully. You've built those relationships with those partners without having the history and maybe some of the good and bad of history of some of those relationships. But that has been key as far as the successes that we've had, is those partnerships with our 24 municipalities, our special districts, and all the different organizations that help Pinellas County run. So we've learned a lot, all of us, I think, in this pandemic, and how we've navigated it. And again, just really appreciate your service and leadership for the people of Pinellas.
Thank you, Commissioner Justice. Commissioner Long?
Yes, since I... Was one of the votes to not hire you. I certainly stand here very apologetic today because I'm glad that my colleagues had the good sense to go ahead and move forward. I think your, your performance has been exemplary, Barry, and I worked really, really hard to put a ding in some of those, so I wouldn't have to give you the highest rating. But I was not successful. I just think you've been outstanding. And it's the first time, I think, any of our administrators have given us an overview like the one that you did, and I really, really appreciate it because so much of what was in there, you kind of lose sight of, you know? We've just been running at such breakneck speed all year. So thank you for your energy, and thank you for your sense of humor, which is really important to have that balance. And I also appreciate that you understand the importance of taking time for yourself and your family, and I think that makes for a better balanced administrator, and I just couldn't be more pleased, so thank you. But I worry, because when you're at the top, I mean, it's, you know, don't start getting sloppy.
Commissioner Flowers? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Seal, go ahead. Thank you, Commissioner Flowers.
Well, I voted on the right side of things way back when. And I just have to say, I will say just one word, which is amazing, and I'm, and I'm very, very grateful.
Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you. When I had a chance to sit down and chat with Barry during my campaign season, we found that we had a couple of things in common, just talking about housing and some other issues. And I said to myself then, you know, I really enjoy working with him because he gets it. He's understanding how to marry the responsibility of being over such a large county, because we are a large county, and I think we are like no other place when it comes to certain issues. But he also understands that we are here to serve the residents of this county. So when he is giving us his best advice, it really is from a place of his best advice. It's not led by anything that he wants to do. It's here are the facts that I have before me, and these are my recommendations to you from a professional level, and I really, really appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that you listen to suggestions and things, and you say, oh, that sounds like a good idea, but I have a couple of, you know, things I want to think about. So it's never a hard no, it's always a, let me think about this. So I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that you, you allow access. I've been in government a long time, and there are some who, they don't want to allow you to have access to the various departments, but really, that's, that's a level of trust, but it's also saying that we work together as a team. And so I really appreciate that because that has helped me in my transition over the last couple of months. So I appreciate everything that you're doing, especially taking on the task of mediating between the city and the rays. That takes a special, a special, special person, and I think you're doing a good job in that on, on the behalf of all the residents. So thank you for the hard work, thank you for everything that you're doing, and I so look forward to just some continued positive things in the future for our county coming at your direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard?
Well, I feel like I have to say something. I mean, and I voted on the right side, too. I had my doubts, but I voted on the right side. But you have certainly exceeded our expectations, and I really appreciate the team that you've put together here. You know, they were all, they're all spectacular without, with the same sort of confident, but not egotistical leadership style. I really like that. You know, you don't have an agenda, you don't have, you're not threatened by us talking to your staff. I really like that. That's, that says a lot. And aside from that, you're a great negotiator of your contract, I saw. I mean, I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
And thanks for that summary, that'll come in handy.
All right. Yeah, well, I, you know, frankly, I remember the, kind of a pivoting of the conversation of the contract right in the middle of the, in the middle of the meeting. So he may have been a good negotiator, but I, you know, I think we were at least able to get him here under some of our own terms, too. I, I was excited to get Barry here. I know he wanted this job. He's looked at it before, but he brought the experience, I think, that we, we needed. From my perspective, he is, I try to tell people, he's like one of the, one of the most fiscally conservative folks that I've seen in that, that position, whether it's county administrator or, but I mean, strategic in how he approaches it, and I appreciate it. I mean, it is about wisely using tax dollars, and I, and I, like I said, I appreciate that. The leadership this past year and a half has been obviously unique and good, and it really starts with communication with, with our doctors, with our, with our partners, with our fire chief, with the schools, you know, and, and having that, that conversation. What, you know, we made mistakes along the way, and we're going to learn about that, you know, probably in January, we take a look back and what we did right and wrong, and how to improve on it. But I'm, I just, just really impressed. Also impressed with the fact that you didn't, you weren't afraid to get in there and look at our building department and development review services and really work through that because, quite frankly, we need to bring Pinellas County back to the top again, you know, in terms of perception and performance. And I, and I really appreciated that. I appreciated you bringing in the three positions to help folks get through the permitting process. You stood up our unincorporated folks, and that was a couple of years ago, but it's progressed even to better levels, are all three of them, Nancy McKibben, Brian Lowak, Chris Moore, all elevating their performance and really connecting with our unincorporated residents, which is something I've wanted for six years, and, you know, you came and you saw that within six months. That was something that was important to you, and I think it's important to our residents. It cuts across all the departments that have business in an area of the county with some communicator that, that kind of links all of that, so it's been, again, really good. I thought it was a really innovative look, approach to doing our budget review, a two-year budget review last year, not having any clue what this pandemic was going to bring to us in sales tax and property values. Cutting our expenses for this current budget that we're in to levels that equaled the year before, taking advantage of a property value increase to drive our reserves up, which is what the goal was, so that we were prepared for a economic downturn like we, we may not have been, had seen before. We just didn't know how that was going to play out. And now that we have the second year in front of us, it's about putting some of those funds, using some of those funds to keep the expenses down, to keep the tax increase to a minimal. We're going to talk about that in a little bit. You know, I feel a little bit differently about that, but I, but the efforts on affordable housing that clearly have a ways to go, but I mean, we got the ball rolling and engaged developers in ways they hadn't been at the table before. Big, it's a big deal to change their model from the market-driven to this and to make sense out of it. And I think that was, that was really great. And so finalizing the Palm Harbor Forum Base, maybe, maybe it seemed easy to you, but it was like pulling teeth getting there, and I, I'm glad we got there, and that community is rallying around the changes that are going on there. And I think a couple of people have talked about the trust. I mean, I asked you this when we interviewed you, you have any problem with me talking to your directors? And you said, no, just don't give them, you know, orders. Work with them, talk to them, and that trust that you have with us, and we continue hopefully to maintain that relationship. It is really important that we're able to talk to department heads and assistant county administrators so that we, and there's too much, you're dealing with too much anyway, but it's also better for us to get that direct input. So there's a whole lot of things, and I didn't get into it. I really would like to see your, the seven-page document that you put together. I really would like to see your, the, the seven-page document that you put together. I'd like to see that online so that our residents can see what has happened over the last year. I mean, it really, I mean, it is amazing testament to the team that you've put together and some of the hires and some of the folks that are, that are elevating. I mean, we had good people, but you're elevating in your accountability to their performances is really been good, too. So, I, you know, I think hats off to all of the employees that we have for stepping up and being a part of the success that we're talking about today. Again, not perfect, but who is, right? But you've done, but you've done a great job, Barry, and I just really wanted to tip my hat to you. And so, is there any, I think it is, it is appropriate, and I'll give you a minute to say a few things, but it's, it's appropriate to provide a, a pay increase recommendation to Barry based on the rest of the employees. That's what we typically do. Are they getting, that's 3% in the budget, so that would be the, the normal, but I leave that up to the commission for a motion. Well, maybe you did negotiate too well the last time.
This isn't going so well.
It was going well, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not hearing that, but we'll let them mull that over and think about it, and I'll turn it to you, Barry, for some comments.
Well, I just, you know, and the seven-page document, you know, Della and our assistants kind of pulling all that together and kind of remembering back, you know, is, is a tremendous effort, and it has been a, a unique year. But, you know, it wasn't just the pandemic. We got other work done because other work still needed to get done. I'll start with the commission. I, you know, I can't thank you enough because we really do have a collaborative environment, and you don't see that everywhere. And that allows the team to really perform. You can provide good direction. We have good frank conversations, and I know where we're going, and I know what we, as staff, can do because of that collaboration with our elected officials. You set that stage, and you also allow us to do our job. When you have that kind of competence and that type of relationship, you're, you're able to take some risks. You know, you're able to go out and try things maybe that are new because you're, you know, you, you understand that that relationship's there, and it's a supportive environment. So, for the commission, I just, I can't thank you enough. You know, my wife and I just absolutely love being here. You know, we've, this has been the best move. It was, the time was right from a family, but I couldn't have landed in a better place. There's just no question about it. But really, the credit for those seven pages goes to the team that's back here, and, and I say that with all sincerity. You know, it's, it's been three years. You always kind of reminisce about things you've done in the past and people you worked with. I can say this team is second to none. I love them dearly. I really do. And I can't, I just can't thank Della and the entire team. You know, they work so very, very hard, and that goes all the way down to our department heads, our employees. It really is a team environment, and that is a very supportive environment to be in, and I just am very, very appreciative of all their efforts.
Thanks, Barry. Appreciate those comments. Okay, Commissioner Flowers, you.
Make a motion to provide the county administrator with a 3% salary increase.
Second.
Well, I thought that was just part of the norm because he's a county employee. Yeah, otherwise.
No, I don't think, we, it has a contract, and it needs to be addressed each year, I think.
That's why I was asking, Jewel, how does this happen?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just to bring clarity, our contracts don't read identically. So, for the administrators, I would recommend that you do take a vote to provide. It has been customary that you all have given the same percentage raise that other employees have gotten for both me and the administrator, but I do recommend that you take a vote on that for the administrator.
So, a motion from Commissioner Flowers, second from Commissioner Justice.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And so, great job this year. And, you know, again, I know a lot of residents feel the same way. Others challenge, have some issues and challenges, but we just keep working with those residents and trying to get better communication going with all of them because every single one of them is important to hear from. So, thank you, Barry. We have the time to just bring anything else up for the commission, and I've been told that the food is here, so just for your information.
Do you have those two items?
Yeah, I know. I've got some stuff. I wanted to see if the others have any. Commissioner Seal.
Just briefly, I will send you all a report on, so the trim notice for JWB is tomorrow night, and it's our second hearing, and it should proceed, but the board did give direction that we may be looking at a millage decrease next year, depending on the performance. JWB does have some other initiatives that I want you to see that are part of this budget, so I will send that to you so that you can take a look at it and see it. I was not at Forward Pinellas, but it looked like it was a fairly uneventful meeting. The countywide plan amendments were all from Pinellas County. They passed unanimously. I was glad to see that the Honeymoon Island State Park is going to have an expansion to the interest that's done. They talked about the Drew Street and Cleorder Concept Plan, and just looking at some flexibility maybe with the strategic intermodal system policy funding. That's, that's, Commissioner Eggers, do you have anything else to add?
That's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just real quick.
Yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two things real quick. One, it was on our consent agenda, item 16, I think. It was the acceptance of a grant. It was $2 million for evaluating wastewater collection systems for manufactured housing facilities in Pinellas County, specifically Joe's Creek, Lake Seminole area. I just wanted to point out that was funds from the Gulf Consortium, which we've been a member of now for many, many years since the BP oil spill, but appreciate you allowing me to continue to serve on that board and glad we were able to bring some money home. The other part, I just, you know, we normally don't get back and forth with the citizens to be heard, but I just, it's been nagging at me for a while. When people say that this commission decided which businesses were essential during the pandemic, which ones were closed, that couldn't be further from the truth. We acted on what the governor decided, which businesses were essential, based on his executive order. I know those people aren't listening probably right now, but sometimes I just need to correct when we hear fiction over and over and over again that that was the case. It came from the governor's executive orders, not by decisions by this commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me make that correction because dog groomers were on the governor's order, and we didn't allow dog groomers. And so, we did, we did go in smaller, we did not allow dog groomers to be open. And so, so we did shrink what the governor said, so.
Absolutely not.
Well, that could be debated, but dog groomers weren't open.
Nope.
We'll have a, we'll have a discussion at a later time. Is there anybody else that has anything for the commission? Excuse me?
Board meeting Friday.
Okay. Thank you. I just had a couple of things. I think a letter was sent, or a notice was sent to you all that yet again, we have a illumination of the Skyway Bridge for the Tampa Bay Rays for the month of October, one week, right? One week for the month of October, so I need a motion for approval of that. Move approval by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Justice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I also want to tell you that since November, November, December, when we made a change at Tampa Bay Water and got rid of the previous executive director, put an interim general manager in, he served us really well the last six months and really stepped up his game, and we had a vote in August. It was awfully close, so I just decided that we'd sit on it for a month. We came back on Monday and made the decision to hire the interim as the permanent. There was a, so Chuck Carden is the new general manager for Tampa Bay Water. He's been involved with the organization for 30 years. Another gentleman was in the running, the finalist. He, he was really, really good, but his interview was even better. And so, it really made a lot of people look closely and think about where he might fit somewhere else in the Tampa Bay region. Some other folks mentioned their cities and that kind of thing. So, it was really good, productive conversation. And the last thing that I have is I just want to let you know that I'm going to present this to somebody in recognition of their loyal commitment to Pinellas County for 25 years. We appreciate your dedicated service, and that's to Jewel White. So, Jewel, I've got a cert, certificate for you. And she got, she got a nice 25-year pin as well and a nice, oh, I forgot to give you the letter from Human Resources, which I'll give to you in just a minute. But in any event, it's a, that's a, that's a great milestone in any organization, so congratulations to you and to your team as well that makes that all possible. And with that said, we are adjourned until 6 o'clock. And with that said, we are adjourned until 6 o'clock.
[1164.12]
Part of our meeting today, and we have two items. The first one is item 34. And before I go to that, I want to go, before I go to Kat, I want to go to Barry for a comment.
So, item 34, I have a conflict of interest. I filed a form with the county attorney, who's going to make that part of the public record. And at this point, because of that conflict, I'm going to leave the room and ask for the county attorney to handle this item.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we may call you back for the next one.
Budget.
Yeah. No, I was, I was trying to make a funny, Barry. I might call you back for the budget.
I didn't hear the second.
Okay. Kat, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number 34 is a quasi judicial petition to vacate submitted by Thomas and Patty Cortetti to vacate 18 feet on the west end of the six-foot wide easement lying along the north boundary of Lot 31 in the Nob Hill addition. Since this is a quasi judicial hearing, all those individuals who do plan to speak on this item must be sworn in. So for those of you who are wishing to speak, if you're able, please raise your right hand. And then do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, signified by saying, "I do"? The public hearing was properly advertised, and affidavit of publication has been received for filing. Letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties, and all interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing. No correspondence was received by the clerk, and the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, any questions for staff on this, on this vacation? Anybody want a presentation? Do I have a motion? Commissioner Long on the motion. Second by Commissioner Seal. I know we have the applicant here, Tom Quartet. Quartet, yes. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With that said, was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this? I didn't see anybody, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. I guess you better call him back. All right, item 35. Kat, did you have any intro on that?
I believe it starts with you, sir.
Say that again?
I believe the script starts with you.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure you didn't have anything to add to it.
Yes, no, thank you.
Okay, so we are going to, this, tonight, we're here to adopt the 22 final millages and final budgets. We will have, at the end, where we have the motion for the millage, and we have a motion for the budget. We have one speaker. He's expressed an interest to speak for, at the millage and at the budget part, so I will allow that, since we just have the one speaker tonight. So when we get to that point, I wanted to let him know that ahead of time. Barry, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. This is the public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 22 final millages and final budgets. Has any correspondence been received regarding the final millages and final budgets to be heard tonight?
Mr. Chair, we have received two letters and two emails regarding the proposed budget. In addition, the Office of Management and Budget has received 37 phone calls from individuals inquiring about their trim notices.
Okay, thank you. Tonight's public hearing is the second and final public hearing for the consideration and adoption of the FY '22, fiscal year '22, final millages and final budgets. Before we get started, I'll walk through the sequence of events for tonight. One, we will accept public comments on the following property tax levies and budgets by the following taxing authority classification. BCC countywide levy for the Pinellas County General Fund and the county levy supporting the Health Department Fund. The levy, the levies for the dependent special districts and municipal services taxing units that going forward will be referenced as MSTUs. Dependent special districts, including the Emergency Medical Services Authority and Pinellas Planning Council, and MSTUs include the unincorporated area MSTU, Public Library Services District, Palm Harbor Community Services District, Feather Sound Community Services District, East Lake Library Services District, East Lake Recreation Services District, and the special fire protection districts. Two, if you're here to speak regarding the final millages and final budgets, you should have filled out a blue card. If you have not filled one out and wish to speak, please see the staff seated by the entry door, and they will assist you. For all the pre-registered online participants, you will be instructed at the proper time to raise your hand at the virtual meeting. And I understand we don't have anybody tonight. After hearing all the public comment, I will ask the board if they recommend any further changes to the final millages and final budgets. And if so, I will ask the board for a motion and a vote to adopt any changes. Number four, finally, we will adopt the resolution setting the final millage rates and budgets. These resolutions will be adopted in accordance with Florida statutes. The final millage will be adopted first, and then the final budget for each of the taxing authorities. Number five, before we begin this public hearing, if anyone has specific questions or concerns regarding the assessed value of their property, exemptions or classification related to your property, or information on the trim notices, tonight we have with us Mike Twitty, who's the Pinellas County Property Appraiser. Mike, raise your hand. There you go. If anyone would like to speak with him, please follow him at this time, and he will answer your questions. For those attending virtually, please contact the Pinellas County Property Appraiser's office at 727-464-3207, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., or email mike@pcpa.org. That's mike@pcpa.org. Number six, Florida statute also provides that a taxing authority may adopt the tax levies and budgets of all of its dependent special taxing districts and MSTUs by a single unanimous vote. However, if a member of the general public requests that the tax levy or budget of a dependent special district or MSTU be separately discussed and separately adopted, we will then discuss and adopt the district's tax levy and budget separately. At this time, does any member of the general public attending the meeting in person request separate discussion or separate adoption of a tax levy or budget of any dependent special Go ahead.
And then, Mr. Chair, for the record, there are no individuals who have pre-registered to, to speak on the proposed budget or millage, so I don't have anybody online.
Okay. All right, since we have not heard from anybody requesting separate discussion and separate adoption of the dependent special district and MSTUs, we will proceed with the adoption of the millages and, and budgets by single unanimous vote. We will now open the second official public hearing on the final fiscal year '22 millage rates and budgets.
This public hearing is being held in accordance with chapters 129 and 200 of the Florida statutes. The meeting has been duly noticed by the notice of proposed tax increase and the summary of proposed budget legal ads, which were published in the September 19th, 2021 edition of the Tampa Bay Times. Affidavits stating proof of publication are to be received for filing.
Thank you, Kat. We, the Board of County Commissioners, as taxing authority for the BCC countywide dependent special district and MSTUs, as previously referenced, will now proceed with the public hearings.
In accordance with the Florida statutes, I want to publicly note that the percentage increase in the millage rates for all budgets over the rollback rate based upon the maximum rates on the trim notice to fund the FY '22 final budget is a 1.93% increase over the aggregate rollback rate. The primary purpose for the increases in millage over the rollback rate are due to the following. In the general fund, including unincorporated area MSTUs, and in the Emergency Medical Services Authority, revenue increases are required to support personnel and operating expenditures that are driven by inflationary factors. In the Pinellas Planning Council, revenue increases are required for the same purposes as per the request of Board Pinellas. In the Public Library Services District MSTU, the Palm Harbor Community Services MSTU, the Feather Sound Community Services MSTU, the East Lake Library Services MSTU, East Lake Recreation Services MSTU, and five special fire protection, protection districts, revenue increases are needed to support increased expenditures by the agencies providing services for those districts. In the other seven special fire protection districts, the revenue decreases are due to those districts having sufficient reserve levels to provide for future planned capital along with property values that can support annual operations.
Thank you, Barry. We will now continue this public hearing as taxing authority for the BCC countywide dependent special district and MSTU levies by taking public comment from citizens who wish to be heard on our FY '22 budget. Do I have all the blue cards for the public comment? Okay, thank you. And it says here, to read the names on the cards, I have Mark Clutho from Largo that would like to speak. I'm just wanting to make sure that I, is this the appropriate time? Mr. Berger? Okay. Mark, come on up, and you can speak for three minutes on one item and three minutes on the other. You'll have six minutes to talk about the millage and/or the budget.
Yeah, three minutes on the millage, and I was told that there wouldn't be the two separate hearings, which is what the statute calls for. I think you need to educate your people here what the law calls for. Now, you're, and it doesn't make sense that the law says the millage comes before the budget, should be the other way around. But that's what the statute says. Now, an increase in taxes is not right, when I see the waste that's happening. Why, just today, at my neighbor's house, there were three pickup trucks, three individuals, to go and work on the water box for their house. Three trucks, three individuals, one digging, two standing there. What efficiency? I mean, isn't this typical? This is how we determine the millage? I just don't see it. Just don't see it. But we're talking millions of dollars more up in smoke. Let's go to the budget. We have here, capital projects, $334 million. And your special revenue funds, $581 million. I mean, not chump change, but this money that's being spent, no, I should say, a lot of it wasted. There's a cause and effect. And what we're seeing now, I mean, we're in this building here where the AC is just going, 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 going. Melting ice imperils nearly all Emperor Penguin colonies. July was the Earth's hottest month on record, NOAA says. Only big steps will save Earth. Huge changes needed to keep nature Earth okay, report says. Stark warnings for the warming planet, UN report spells out dire consequences of climate Adults are failing us on climate. Earth's carbon dioxide levels at highest level in four million years. A hotter future is now inevitable, a UN report says. Get ready for the climate disasters. Weren't we lucky with Ida that there was that high pressure? Weren't we lucky with Ida that there was that high pressure that pushed that storm to the west? Here's this article about Casa Pasva, New York, they're giving aging buildings a green makeover. Now, this is where you should be spending the money here. I don't see it happening. They're retrofitting these old buildings, some of the oldest buildings in New York. When they're finished, they'll be cutting the utility bill by more than 80%. Your money spent on buildings here, not the wise thing, not even close. But, you know, when I look at things like those three county employees with their three pickup trucks to do one water box at the neighbor, the key word here is proportion. Most important word in the language, proportion.
Thank you, Mark. At this time, we'll take public comment from those who have registered, and I'm assuming we have none.
Mr. Chair, for the record, we do not have anybody who preregistered.
Okay. Now that we have heard from all, heard all public comments from citizens, does any member of the board recommend any changes to these final millage rates? Yeah, Commissioner Peters?
I do, and I still would like to recommend we go to the rollback rate. You know, we spend $81 million on affordable housing, and yet we've done nothing to protect our homeowners. We raised their taxes last year, and we wanted, we suggested we do a marketing campaign to let the people know we didn't raise their taxes, so let's not do that again. So if we do adopt this millage rate that has been proposed, again, we are going to be raising taxes. And I'm not asking you to even cut taxes, I'm just asking you to go back to the rollback rate so we collect the same amount we did last year. This year, we have an opportunity, not given any other year, where we're going to get $189 million for the federal government without rules, without parameters. And we can, instead of putting $12 million on the backs of only property owners, not anybody else that uses our roads for wear and tear on roads, we aren't giving it to our tourists, we are not giving it to our renters, we're not giving it to big corporations that send their trucks into our county, we're going to put it on the backs of our homeowners until 2035. And that $12 million could certainly be paid for by this money that we're getting from the Rescue Act. The sheriff's cameras can certainly be paid for by the money we're getting from the Rescue Act. We did not give our citizens a break last year. We raised their taxes, and we took it out of their bank account, just like it was said by one of our callers today, and we put it in our bank account. We didn't pay a bill on it. Now, they have continued, our citizens have continued to suffer, and businesses have been bad, people have been laid off for two, for a year and a half. The amount of anxiety and mental health that our citizens have had to put up with. We've raised our sewer rates, we've raised our water rates, we've raised our garbage rates, insurance rates are going up, and according to flood insurance, the flood insurance are going to be going up significantly every year. We have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to give our citizens a break because we got a gift of $189 million from the federal government, and I think that we should go to the rollback rate, give our citizens a break, and not charge them any more than we charged them last year. Instead of having a proposed millage rate of 1.93 tax increase, which I'm not sure what the total amount was, so last year was a $31 million tax increase. I don't have, and I'm sure Bill has, what the total amount increase is going to be this year. And I just think that we have this wonderful gift, this wonderful opportunity to protect our homeowners, because we have not been protecting our homeowners. We're worried about affordable housing, but we've done nothing to help the people that already have their homes and stay in their homes. And I think that we owe it to them after such a difficult year and a half that doesn't seem to be getting any less stressful or any less anxiety. And with the flood insurance, I spoke to a mayor who had a presentation at the Big C, they said maybe an 18% increase in flood insurance. I mean, that's a big deal in Pinellas County. And our homeowners are really going to be struggling, and I just can't understand why we would consider raising taxes when we have the ability to have $189 million to give us all the things we want and then some. We don't even have a plan for the $189 million. Why would not we consider giving our citizens a break? I mean, if it were up to me, I'd go past the rollback rate and actually give them a tax cut. But the way it was printed in the paper, and one of our callers was absolutely right, it said that they were going to save up to $25. Well, they're not going to save up to $25, it's not a tax cut. We are raising the millage rate over and above what we collected last year. So they're not getting a tax break, they're getting a tax break if we left the millage the same, but it really wasn't explained to the citizens very well in that article that we are actually increasing their taxes again. And I just cannot believe when we have this incredible gift that we would put this on the backs of our citizens and our homeowners, especially the Transportation Trust Fund. I mean, that is just, that's what that gift was for, and the fact that we're not going to give that to anybody else and only, only to our property owners till 2035, when we don't have to, makes no sense. And I just, I really beg of you on behalf of our citizens to give them a break and leave the tax rate exactly what it was last year so we collect the exact same amount of money and we don't raise taxes. Just this one time, we have the opportunity to do this, why don't we do this? Why don't we give this to the people and give them some of their money? We don't have a plan for the $189 million. Go to the rollback rate, leave the tax, the amount, the exact same that we collected last year. It gave us a lot of money last year, $31 million that went into reserves, that's going to give us plenty of money this year, and let's give the people a break. Let's give the homeowners a break. Instead of worrying about affordable housing, let's help people stay in their homes.
I, well, I was looking at the general fund and looking at, and I may ask Bill to come up here so I don't misspeak, but looking at page 831 on the budget, which is somewhat changed here, but when you look at reserves and the total dollars and as a percent of revenues over the next five, six years, again, I'm going to read what's on 831, and I, Bill, Bill said that it's lower than what they're showing here, but you're talking about reserves going up to 800, was it $850 million in 2027, and which represents 50%, up to 50%, not 15, not 22, not 23, but in essence, and again, I think, I don't want to focus on that number as much as I want to focus on the fact that over the next five to six years, we have a large increase in our reserves that I think begs the question, you know, why? I know some of those, we have some ideas what to spend on, but for me, I think a line item in our expense that talks about a payment, an additional payment to our tax, our gas tax fund, which would allow us, you know, I think in the same way Commissioner Peters was, to do a rollback weight, right? I was talking about more from a reserve standpoint, but I knew you were speaking of from the ARPA standpoint, but either way, we, it seems as though we have monies in there to do the capital programs that are anticipated to use those reserves and at the same time also use, have an additional line item for our gas tax fund. One of the things that we talked about a year ago, again, just to remind everybody, and I, and I was out there talking to folks about doing a two-year budget, and I was really proud of the fact that we were looking at that, you know, pandemic and not understanding what it was going to do to us. And so we were being extra cautious to say, well, if we had a collapse in sales tax and we had a collapse in property taxes, that we don't want to be raising millage rates next year. So we cut costs to a level, frankly, that were the same as the year before. So I commended staff on that, and then we took advantage of the property tax values, and so our reserves went up. I'm not sure if it was 23%, 24%, but we used some of that to good use during this year. So we've had, we have the opportunity, and again, I'm just looking at this form, and Bill, you can talk to it right now, but I just think it's an opportunity for us to just pause a little bit and think about what we, what we told our residents, that indeed we're going to protect you if we have an economic collapse, which we did not, so let's give it back to them. And I, I think it's, you know, again, I'm not saying what's the best way to do it, but I think I'd like, Bill, if you can talk to the reserve levels over the next five to six years and maybe bring those numbers down to a more realistic number than what you first published in the very beginning. So, go ahead.
So, Commissioner, the page that you're referring to in the proposed budget was part of our budget forecast for the general fund, and that page was, has not yet been fully updated to reflect the fact that we're going to have $12 million going to the Transportation Trust Fund. It's also not been updated based on some other changes that were reflected in the tent of budget, which is now the budget that you're looking at potentially adopting tonight. And as a result, what you will see is that there is still going to be growing reserves based on the forecast throughout the forecast period.
Okay.
The rate of ascent of reserves is not going to be as steep as what you see in the proposed budget.
Not as steep or not as high?
Not as steep, not as high.
Yeah.
And, and part of that is also reflected in the fact that in the proposed budget, the millage rate that was reflected there was 5.1768. However, the effective, and I'm going to say effective, budget that's going to impact the general fund year in, year out, if you adopt the budget that you're presented with today, is 5.0023, which is the full rollback rate, plus the dedicated increment that's going to come into the general fund and go directly right back out to the Transportation Trust Fund. So that will have no positive impact on reserves for the general fund. So that's the reason that when you look at that chart and you see the adopted budget version of that chart.
Yeah.
For the forecast for the future years, you will see continued growth forecast, but not as much growth as is currently reflected in the proposed.
But if we, if we didn't transfer that, those monies, right, the, the, the real millage rate would be the roll, the full rollback.
That is correct, sir.
Just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on that, and how we, how we can arrive at that by using some reserves instead of using, they're, they're all general fund money, but I'm talking about below the line versus above the line. So just, you know, just another way of accomplishing what we're trying to do.
That would be an alternative strategy, that's not what's currently reflected in what's being proposed.
I got it. So I think, again, I just think it's just an opportunity that we have to, and again, whether it's ARPA funds or whether it's this, I mean, again, I get back to the, and I asked the question last meeting whether ARPA funds could be used. We talked about tax shortfalls, and certainly there's an element of the gas tax last year that had a shortfall, and whatever, and you know, and to that extent, those funds are legitimate uses for reinvesting in those shortfalls. So I just think we have opportunities here to, to do the, to do a full rollback, and I, so I would agree with that, and look for some consideration from the commission for that discussion. And if that's not the case, then we will, you know, move on. So I'm seeing obviously no appetite for that. I'm, I'm assuming that what could be done is to go through the process and have a motion in a second and vote it down and then come back to the, to the motion on the table. So if, if anybody wants to make a motion, now's the time to make a motion. Make sure I'm, make sure I'm correct on that. Yeah, all right. The Board must now consider the resolutions to set the final millage rates and budgets. As stated earlier, we will adopt the final millage rates and budgets in the following Are we, is this the time that we need to, to address the millage rate and, I just want to make sure I'm not out of line here. I know we have the script going forward, but I'm not hearing any, any motions at this point. Is that correct?
You're, you're correct.
That's correct, sir.
So after that change, then you're going to vote as to what we're doing.
I just, that's what I wanted to make sure. The Board must now consider the resolutions to set the final millage rates and budgets. As stated earlier, we will adopt the final millage rates and budgets in the following sections. One, BCC countywide, to include general fund and Health Department, and two, dependent special district and MSTUs. The resolutions adopting the final millages and budgets for the dependent special district and MSTUs require a unanimous vote. If a unanimous vote is not received, we will need to adopt each of these separately. I will now ask the county administrator to proceed with the readings and for the communications to display Schedule A that will be referenced during the readings and the vote.
And they, they have those up. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will announce each resolution separately for the Board's action. Per Florida statutes, the Board will vote on the final millage first and then on the final budget for each taxing authority. We will start with consideration of a Pinellas County General Fund millage. For the, for the general fund, I recommend adoption of a millage levy of 5.1302, which reflects a 2.56% increase over the rollback rate of 5.0023.
May I have a motion to adopt the final millage?
So moved.
Commissioner Flowers on the motion, Commissioner Long on the second. Is this, this isn't roll call, this is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Second.
I have a motion by, who made the motion? Commissioner Gerard, sorry about that, made the motion, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. That vote, the, the vote for the millage passed five to two, the vote for the final budget passed five to two. Go ahead, Barry.
For the Health Department, I recommend adoption of the millage levy of .0790, which is the same as the rollback rate of .0790.
Okay, thank you. Second, Commissioner Flowers on the motion, Commissioner Long on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, sorry, is that a nay? Okay. Motion passes six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
May I have a motion to adopt the final budget? Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Seal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
We'll now consider the millage rates and budget of dependent special districts and MSTUs. I recommend adoption of the final millage rates for the dependent special districts and MSTUs as detailed in Schedule A, which is in your paper handout and being displayed as was previously posted on the county website.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry, I'm sorry? Motion carries six to one.
Okay. So we, we have, we have to go to an alternative script? Because that required a unanimous vote.
So, just want to make sure that I'm on the right page. Are we on page one of the alternate script?
You're going to skip to page four of the alternate script.
Correct. So, so we're going to go over to the alternatives, alternative script because, again, the certain ones pass the general fund, they require a unanimous vote. So for the Emergency Medical Services Authority, requires five, five of seven votes, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .9158, which reflects a 6.638% increase over the rollback rate of .8609.
May I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
Pinellas Planning Council, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .0150, which reflects a 5.63% increase.
Wait, I think we still have to do the budget of...
Oh, oh, I recommend adoption of the final budget, sorry.
May I have a motion for that?
A move.
Commissioner Flowers on the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next, is Pinellas Planning Council, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .0150, which reflects a 5.63% increase over the rollback rate of .0142.
May I have a motion to adopt the final? Motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Seal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
May I have a motion to adopt? Move approval by Commissioner Seal, second by Commissioner Gerard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
Unincorporated area MSTU, our... Unincorporated area MSTU, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 2.0857, which reflects a 4.55% increase over the rollback rate of 1.9949.
Motion to adopt the final millage. Commissioner Flowers on the motion, Commissioner Long on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Commissioner Flowers on the motion, Commissioner Long on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Public Services, Public Library Services District MSTU, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .5000, which reflects a 4.38% increase over the rollback rate of .4790.
May I have a motion for adoption? Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to one.
Palm Harbor.
Motion carries, excuse me, go ahead.
Palm Harbor Community Services District MSTU, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .5000, which reflects a 5.71% increase over the rollback rate of .4730.
May I have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Long and second by Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, yeah, just, and just to that, to that millage, this was obviously worked out really diligently by the boards up there, and had good reception to people who came to the meeting, so that, it was a lot of work that went into that Palm Harbor Community District MSTU. I have a motion and a second for the final millage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Flowers. Second by Commissioner Seal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Next is Feather Sound Community Services District MSTU. I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .7000, which reflects a 5.36% increase over the rollback rate of .6644.
Move approval, a motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Justice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to, go ahead, number nine, sorry.
Eastlake Library Services District MSTU, again, requires five of seven votes. I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .2500, which reflects a 4.69% increase over the rollback rate of .2388.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, oh, excuse me, six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Eastlake Recreation Services District MSTU, again, requires five of seven. I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .2500, which reflects a 4.69% increase over the rollback rate of .2388.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Excuse me. Motion carries six to one.
Beller Bluffs Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 1.4600, which reflects a 4.77% decrease from the rollback rate of 1.5331.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Clearwater Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage rate of 2.6163, which reflects a .07% increase over the rollback rate of 2.6147.
Six, it was a .6 at the end. Yeah.
What did I say?
Barry, you said seven at the end, that's all.
Sorry.
It's okay. 2.6146.
We're getting down there.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Dunedin Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 2.0000, which reflects a 16.51% decrease from the rollback rate of 2.3954.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Gandy Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 1.0679, which reflects a 1.04% decrease from the rollback rate of 1.0791.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
High Point Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 2.6700, which reflects a 6.72% increase over the rollback rate of 2.5018.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Largo Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 2.9132, which reflects a .21% decrease from the rollback rate of 2.9193.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Pinellas Park Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 3.1976, which reflects a 4.09 increase over the rollback rate of 3.0720.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Safety Harbor Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 2.0000, which reflects a 16.57% decrease from the rollback rate of 2.3972.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Seminole Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 1.7287, which reflects a 5.92% decrease from the rollback rate of 1.8375.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
South Pasadena Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of .2900, which reflects a 26.15% decrease from the rollback rate of .3927.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Tarpon Springs Fire District, I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 2.3745, which reflects a 4.90% increase over the rollback rate of 2.2636.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Tierra Verde Fire District, requires five of seven votes. I recommend adoption of the final millage levy of 1.9118, which reflects a 5.29% increase over the rollback rate of 1.8157.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
I recommend adoption of the final budget.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Mr. Chair, for the record, can I get 20B a nay, please?
I'm sorry?
20B, if that would be a nay from me, please, for the record.
Okay, so it was six, it was unanimous, now Commissioner Peters wants to vote no on that, so it reflects a six to one.
Okay, for the Tarpon Springs Fire District, for the final budget, correct?
Is that right?
Yes, perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the final FY '22 county budget. I recommend the board adopt, the resolution adopting the final FY '22 county budget as filed and available for the review at Board Records.
May I have a motion?